Tuesday, July 30th, 2024. The first item on our agenda this evening is an approval not required plan, an A and R plan, under the subdivision control law for 570 Arnhow Farm Road for reconfiguration of a lot line with the creation of Lot A, which is not a building lot, to be conveyed to Lot 148. Do we have anyone here this evening? Fantastic.
Ian Hazelton with Hannigan Engineering. So both lots-
One second, let me just pull it up for you. Well, if you wait with for one second, that way we can look at it while we talk. Stamp plan.
Yep, stamp.
Share screen. All right.
There we go.
Okay, all yours.
So both lots are under the same ownership. There's not going to be any sort of changes in frontage. Frontage will remain the same. So the intent is to create parcel A to be annexed with Lot 14B.
Oh, 14B.
That's from my understanding for the construction of a garage.
Okay. Does any board member have any question?
Looks good.
All right, straightforward. All the frontage is there for the A and R, so... We have the plan. Do we have the pen of power over there?
Yes.
There's two.
Yeah. That'll give you the gist of it. I don't have ours. I know I emailed it at one point, but I can't find it.
Yep.
Minimum? We're all good. So Chantel, if we're all set there, you're just gonna take the one you need.
You can take the Mylar.
The Mylar. All right.
You know what? I know where it is. I have it. It's on my keychain. Give me one second.
Okay.
Possible it's on here.
All right, so we're done with the A and R segment. Our second piece is a minor site plan.
I have it here.
Which we think so far-
Want me to read it?
Go ahead. We have our opening statement that is just a little bit delayed.
All meetings of the Fitrick Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. Please state your name and address, approach the center table, either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. The planning board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FETV is conducting audio and video recordings of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. Seeing none. All yours now, Paula.
All right, thank you. All right. The next section on our agenda is minor site plans. We have one continued for 491 Electric Avenue for proposing the use of a church in existing storefront. We requested, there was some additional information requested from the last meeting. Do we have anyone in attendance here for that? Okay. That being said, and we know, Chantel, you did perform outreach to the applicant to see if they wanted to-
Yes, I did. They said they were going to attend tonight.
They did?
They did.
Well, we can revisit after the next public hearing.
And then I asked them if they had new material or site plans, and then I got no response. So I don't know if they'll show up later or not, but I can follow up after the meeting.
We will put that aside for the moment.
Okay.
Because there's only a couple of options we can do at this point, and without having them here, there's only one recourse we could potentially do, so. That being said, we will move on to our public hearing segment, for which the first item we have is under the Scenic Road Act, which is the joint hearing with the tree warden. The applicant, Unitil, is proposing tree cutting where the removal of 21 trees along Alpine Road is necessary due to the upgrades needed to our electric lines for a solar field owned and operated by Alpine Ridge LLC. So we have the forest this evening.
I have the document up. Dave, I have the document up, so if you want to go through it however you want to do, just tell me and I'll direct it to whatever you want.
My name is Dave Clappam. I'm the forestry supervisor for Unitil, and I'm here with-
My name is Keith Carrow. I'm the manager of electric operations for Unitil.
Okay.
We're looking to remove 22 trees. We will also-
Two.
Grind the stumps that we can. If it's within the stone wall, like in the past, we have trouble-
Dave, can I just ask you a favor? Just speak up, just so people, if there is anyone virtual, so they can hear.
So we're looking to remove 22 trees along the Alpine Road from the top down to Wallace, Westminster Hill Road, and we will grind all the 22 stumps as long as we can get in there with equipment. If it's within the stone wall, it's a little bit trickier, but we'll do the best we can. And we'll do 22 replacements for the city, working with the tree warden, planting where deemed fit.
Can I ask you a generic question on that?
Yep.
What size are the replacements? Caliper?
They're usually about one inch.
Okay. Six feet?
Yeah. And it really depends on species. But typically, when you plant smaller species or smaller trees, they take off better, they're easier to maintain. I like to think of it as like, you know, when you move a high school student from one community to another one, there's usually an adjustment period that takes place. Whereas if you move that five-year-old, it's easier and the trees are just like kids almost. They just, it's easier to adjust smaller root balls, smaller shock to the tree. So that's why we go with the smaller sized trees.
So I'm looking through the list.
Yep.
I had, did not have the opportunity to drive the road yet.
Yep.
Are they all marked?
Yes.
In that regard. I guess my first comment, as I am deeply concerned about these very large diameter trees, that you have 30 inches in plus.
Yep.
This is a scenic road.
Right.
So one thing about some white pines and some scraggly, you know, ones, but when you're talking about some substantial, and we talk about replacements with one inch.
Right.
And it's like, and they should be more like suitable for a scenic road and not, you know, like oak or something. I mean, we want to actually enhance and be back to that stature.
Right.
Scenario of a minimum of like one-to-one for whatever you're removing, to be able to place those. So we would be also looking for, I would like to see submitted within, I would say we can talk about number of days, but a plan, a planting plan and the trees to go along the road. So as we know, that's actively being scheduled to be worked on with that. But I also want to go through because I said, some of these, I have questions on, just because it's like, okay, there's a stress crack, supposedly called a stress, on a very large tree that's been there a very long time. Also, I see differences in canopies where it's like, removal of 30% of canopy will kill the tree, removal of 70% of canopy, remove the tree. You know, it's kind of like, when you see 30%, it's like, can we just work on limbing it instead of removing a 30-inch diameter tree?
Right.
Understandably, too, about some trees, yes, do have hollows. They can still last another couple decades in that regard, so eventually trees will. None of them are, you know, perfect, but we, and I guess, I'll just put it out there, it's not a transmission right of way where it's going to be completely clear lines of trees. So you kind of, this is expected on a scenic road to be able to, you know, we're going to have to work in between some of these branches and not just remove probably everything, you know, for the ideal circumstance.
Yeah.
Okay? So I need to be a little bit more compromised. Again, I haven't, just from viewing the photos, it's like, might be different when I, you know, see them firsthand, and I want to take some feedback also from the tree warden and comment regarding it.
Absolutely.
But those were some of the things, because there's such a large volume of trees here. It's like, what's the length of the road we're talking about for the, you know, with 20, you know, trees being removed?
Right. I'll let Dave get into that. So I'm the construction person. We're doing this for a solar field up at the top that we're required to interconnect. The lines that we're building now are larger because it has to connect to that. So our standards are different than the smaller wires we had for a while before. It's only a couple firearms up there, not a lot of load at all. So now that we're required to rebuild our lines, we have to build them to code to the NESC, Natural Electric Safety Code. So what we're doing also is differently, is we're building bundle construction. We call it spacer cable, so if you see it, the primaries are all like a diamond shape, they're not out on crossarms. So we're doing our best to reduce the footprint up there, at the same time trying to enhance the reliability. And some of those trees, the conditions and the age, at the time we're going through this, we're trying to help the customers with reliability, at the same time taking in concerns, it is a scenic road. Up until, I park up there and have lunch, looking out over Alpine. It's beautiful. We fully understand that. We want to do the right thing, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we help reliability at the same time. So it's kind of a, it is a twofold thing, but we understand why the people would want what's best for all of us, and I agree with you. I just, I don't want to go ground the sky. That's not our thing, and that's why we're using a different type of construction, so we can try to eliminate the removals, but also at the same time, as Dave, you know, Dave's my tree guy, I'm not a tree guy. That's why I call him Dave the Tree Guy. He understands all this, and we talk back and forth about, this is what I need, and Dave will say, if we do this, you know, you could have 30% removal. If you get to 40%, then it impacts the trees. So, you know, we're not taking this lightly by any means. We don't want to go through there. We want to make it the best. And typically, after a year after trimming is complete, a lot of times, it doesn't look near as bad. I understand people go and they see this canopy, then they see this. A year later, they see this. It is different, but I fully understand, we want to work with the city and, you know, our residents and our, you know, my customers. We want to do what's best, so. I just, I told Dave, I want to be here to talk about the construction piece of it, and that's kind of why we're doing, why we're asking to do what we'd like to do, if possible.
I do have a question about the construction aspect of this. Are all the poles being replaced? Because I noticed the pictures start at Westminster Hill Road.
Basically, yes. There's 100 poles being replaced, approximately.
You know, obviously, I know that, and I'm sure it's partially because of the usage, but is there anything, are any of the cuts more extensive when you get to, when you get to the field, when you get to the array? I know you guys do the, you know, five poles in or whatever. Are there more cuts in that area? I didn't notice specifically where you were talking, because there's no addresses on any of these.
Most of the tree work that we have to do is from pole one to pole 16, 17, which is the top of the hill in the corner.
On Alpine?
On Alpine.
When you say top of the hill, you're talking about before the flat, before the fields?
Right. Right at that sharp corner.
280 Alpine, something like that, 300?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Everything, it's, most of the removals that are on the town right away are from there down.
Anything inside that is not Unitil removal, that's the solar company.
And I did notice at least one comment about questionable status, whether it was in the public way or on private property. Did you approach that property owner?
Yes, all the property owners have been approached.
Okay. Meaning, if we can give you authority to take one down, we can't tell you it's on public property.
Right.
So if there's questionable status and the city does say you can take it down, you're obviously, you need to contact the property owners before you touch the tree.
Right, we will do our due diligence.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if it's, some of these are right on the street, so not as questionable, but, you know, you have like, the pole 1314, it says borderline of city trees, in front of the stone wall, but roughly seven feet from the curb. So just, you know, keep that in mind. But I did kind of agree with Paula in that, I mean, I guess I'll defer to maybe our tree warden to give us the city side of things. If there's any of these that you think are not in imminent danger of, you know, dying or falling, then my preference is to leave those. I think that's kind of what Paula was saying as well, meaning if we're talking about they have, you know, decades left of life, then let's not take them down for the sake of taking them down. If it's a, if there are scenarios where there's a tree that has to come down because of utility pole location, then, you know, obviously, we'll have to have that conversation when we get to the specific trees. So did you want to go through the pictures?
You can go through the pictures.
All right, let me, hold on, let me share.
The pictures were taken in March.
Okay.
Because I was trying to get on the April planning board meeting, and we had the whole-
Issue with the-
Issue with not having a tree warden and all that stuff.
So this is the summation of the trees that's up now.
Yep.
And then we'll start, I think we start at the bottom, because this picture, I can tell that house is Westminster Hill Road, straight ahead.
Dave-
Let me zoom in as far as I can. You guys, standing up, you might have a tough time looking at these unless Dave has a printout of the packet there, but-
Yeah.
So my guess is, the first two trees we're talking must be right at the base of Alpine?
So they're right on the first corner when you turn onto Alpine and you start heading towards the top of the hill.
Okay.
But it's right where the guy's got the shed and everything, right on that first, very first corner you come up to after you turn onto Alpine.
Actually, before we get into this, two questions. When are you anticipating doing the clearing, first of all, pending the issuance of-
As soon as possible. We're-
This season?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
The reason why I ask that is, the next question I'm going to ask is our tree warden, have you had a chance to look at these?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Because if you said no, I would say let's-
No, Dave and I, we met, not last week, the week prior. We took a drive, we went out and looked at all the trees and everything like that, your plans and whatnot.
Next time we do this, when that happens, when you orchestrate it with Dave, orchestrate it with Paula or I too, or Chantel? Because we'll go with you.
Oh, okay.
Because we have to make this determination as well, so. So anyway, let's go through them and see, you know, and again, the, I think the intent should be save them unless they're dying or dead. Okay? So that's kind of the baseline I think we should go off of. If you believe some of these are salvageable and not problematic, and again, I'm talking to James, our tree warden, if you think that some of them are questionable and, you know, not dying, then I think the, at least my preference would be to leave it. So. So anyway, do you have, so this first page, are there any comments either of you guys have on these? Obviously, Dave, I saw your notes.
Yep.
But if you want to talk specifically, I think the tree particularly on the bottom left, bottom left and bottom right, because the first two look somewhat problematic.
Right.
And then you get to the bottom left and bottom right, and I, you know-
So the bottom, the bottom right picture is a picture of all three of them together.
Okay. So that's, so that's these three right before you get to that house?
Yep.
Okay.
If you were coming down the hill from the top of Alpine.
Yep, yep. You're going towards Westminster Hill, yep. Okay. So then, in that case, the one on the left, I think, just if you can give me a summation of why you want to take it and what's wrong with it.
It's got a spot that looks like it's been hit by the plow a couple times, which is in the picture, but I didn't print the color photos out.
If you need the color photo, I have it.
It's kind of... So it's got like, it's a Norway maple, which they're invasive. They also, they also tend to rot out quicker.
It's across the street from the lines, too. That's why it's like, why would you even address it?
And it's like, right under the line. It's, this one's, I mean, this one we probably could leave.
Again, if the, if we're not sure, if they're not, you know, something we see as an imminent issue, I think my preference is, and I welcome the rest of the board's comments, too, just leave it. I mean, the more of these mature trees on scenic road we have, the better, so.
Dave, is this in the way the construction of the utility lines at all?
Here on the other side of the street?
Yeah, I think it's-
Yeah.
And you brought up a great point about unless it's, you know, right in our way, we're willing to, you know, work around it. I've just, if these come down on these types of construction, they cause quite a bit of damage.
And maybe, I'm making an assumption, but in maybe-
This one is more-
Our trees have maybe have made a decision from the city side that certain aspects need to come down, so we'll ask, if you have a, if you-
There are a lot of the trees, when I went with Dave, since becoming tree warden, one of the, I guess, the many phone calls and emails that I receive are trees growing through the power lines, or trees near the power lines, or trees coming down on the power lines and fearful outages, and just from past experience in history with ice storms and whatnot, and just even the winters that, since I've been here, with damage to power lines and issues of getting the power back up. If there is ways that we can, I know that this is a scenic road, and I do understand the aspect of keeping it a scenic road, but if there are trees that are, which many of, the majority of these trees are, when driving up with Dave, either damaged, dying, or their limbs are right on or right near the power lines. In my mind, I had the preemptive thought to be like, okay, well, if this is a solution to help to minimize the damage that potentially could be caused from the storms where these trees are very close to the power lines, if not near or on the power lines, and part of the project where it's not going to cost, from my understanding, it's being, the cost is being covered by the solar-
Yep.
Company, it's not Unitil, so it doesn't reflect on-
Rebase.
The citizens paying the rates. It's being funded by that solar company. If it made sense to cut it down instead of just trimming it, or where they're going to be replaced or relocated, and where they're going to take out the stumps to, to create, that that was a big point that I made when talking to Dave. I said, all right, well, if we're cutting it down, we're not going to leave the stump, right? And he said, no. He said, we'll not leave the stump on the scenic road. It's going to be ground up as best they can, obviously, near a wall, it might be a little bit tricky.
Do you know why Dave says that? Do you know why Dave says that? Because we've chastised him many years now for that, for that particular practice. We've been through this, obviously, and, you know, the, the planning board's been through this process many times. We did Mount Ill, and we did, we did a lot of, a lot of streets, and I think it's been impressed upon us that, yeah, it would be safer if you cut every tree down, but that's not the smart way to do things.
Oh, no, and I'm not saying every tree's like-
So my question is, if any of these are not dying, then we leave them. If you say they're dead or dying, I will 100% take your word for it. You are our independent party, meaning you can say no. Unitil, in a lot of cases, I can tell you, when we did Mount Ill Road, they wanted to take every tree down that they could, because it was cheaper for them to take it down now than to repair lines after a tree takes them down.
It's also reliability.
Yeah, right. You want, yeah, you don't want, you don't want service down and-
Not just cost.
Right. But again, it's not a transmission right of way, where you're going to have clear lines everywhere, specifically on a scenic road.
We're not asking for that.
So, well, I-
Well, what's scenic about an invasive species? It's like, which one is the invasive species? I don't see the oaks as being like, you know-
These three maples are-
The Norway maples are invasive, so if they're replacing, if they're replacing the trees with something that in the future is going to actually add to the scenery of the road, and these trees are spreading like that seed stuff that gets all over the place and under your windshield wipers and like, things like that, like, it might be, you know, it hurts right now, but later on, it might be better off.
See, a lot of, and I agree, a lot of these I see are almost on the power lines, and I think, why?
They can trim around, some of them.
If they can trim them, fine, but they're also saying like, sometimes if you take away 30%, I thought, I read that.
So out of the three trees, these three, three trees right here.
I'm more concerned about those large diameter trees, myself. Those are the stature trees for the scenic road. It's like, again, the scrappy ones, things like that, seemingly, you know, that are sprouting up here and there, not so scenic.
So, because everyone's generalizing. That's why I want to do this page by page.
Right.
Because I think it's the only way to do this. So let's just, Dave, you're on it. What's this, just go to this page.
So for pole one, there's three, the three Norway maples.
Yep.
I'm proposing we leave the one on the left, autumn picture.
This one, yep.
Yep, and take out the other two.
Perfect. I agree. How about the rest of the board?
Agree.
Sounds good.
That's a majority. Paul or Amanda would be in a majority. Okay. Next one, this one.
This is the big oak on the corner, where we, for pole two, I'd have to look at the new location of the pole. I believe the pole height is right at a large leader that hangs out over the road. Removing the large leader would take out 60% of the live crown, which would, when you're taking more than 30% for pruning wise, you end up killing the tree. We can try and take the leader out.
Is that pole going, do you see my cursor on there? Because you said right lead, and I kept thinking left lead, like-
It's-
This one is coming off?
No, it's the other one.
This, okay. So it's right probably when you're looking at it from Westminster Hill?
Yeah.
So why can't you limb up some of the limb, right, then?
So it would be that whole lead right there, depending on where the pole is set.
Well, still depending on where the pole's set.
The pole is already set, I just didn't, I don't remember how it looks.
I can-
I wish I took another-
So that's the, because it's the oaks that are 30 inches of my really big piece, at least.
I get it.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but those are like the-
If I can, we have, our new near maps are in, from, I think they're May now. They might have it, I just got to find them. Also, might not, you might not be able to see it because they're aerials and not street scenes.
Yeah, I think the poles are set in June.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, they, I don't think they'd be on there either way.
They're within three feet of the other poles, of the Unitil poles.
Just looking at the street scene to see if we got lucky that-
Sometimes we get lucky with the, yeah.
Every once in a while, yeah.
Google can be a friend at times.
So is the gist of this conversation that, as far as you guys were concerned, that with the new pole location, that lead has to come off, meaning there's no-
Right.
-trimming or anything? That lead has to come down?
Right. It's right in the way of where the wires are going to run for the corner.
So were we supposed to talk about this before you put the poles down, or?
If we sit within three feet of our existing utility poles, we don't have to come in for a pole petition. If we go outside of three feet, we have to come in for a pole petition. So many times, we try to keep our poles within that reason.
Right, because it's, I would say streamlined process for you, but it's a scenic road, and maybe there's a better location that the pole could be at.
In this case, if we put our poles back even further, we'd be taking out more, more utility, more trees.
And we-
If we put our, we don't want to put our poles any closer to the road because more vehicle accidents. We take it back further, now we're removing more trees, so we're trying to reduce the impact of anything we do. We understand everything we do has an impact. We fully understand that. We're just trying to reduce the impact as much as possible.
All right, so this is right at the corner, right? The first corner?
Yep.
I guess the question would be, because I know we're on the second one here, is like, do we return some questionable ones to see whether or not we come back to that, and then.
Okay, so, so just leave, just table that one and move on to the next one. That's fine.
Because I'm not sure how you can make it, how we can make it educated without going to look at it.
Yep, there might be one, like you said, we might have to just, just approve all the other ones, and then go back to this one later and say, you know, we need to see it in, in relation to where the pole is and go from there. So let's, let's just keep moving. We'll go back to it.
Think about, it's still, think about the value. It's like, I know this is like, you know, we, it's been delayed as a process, but a 30-inch tree, it, the value of that tree, in all her figures, it's huge for saying, we're taking the, that whole tree down.
It'd be good to know which ones, which ones are we going to lose, uh, if we really want to save this tree? Like, you said, you'd have to cut down more trees if you want to keep this one. It might, like, is it a bunch of Norway maples? Like?
That, that's a question. I, I don't have an answer right now. We'd have to look at that.
So we visit pole two oak.
Yep, we'll go back to that one.
Yep.
So, next one?
The next one, there's three trees, uh, three Norway maples.
I mean, the right, on the right's self-explanatory.
Right.
There's nothing left of that tree.
There's one that's private property, and the two are on the outside of the wall, um, that's there, and it's right on the corner. One of them has that pretty bad decay. The other one's in pretty rough shape as well. Um. They've been hit by plows and everything else because they're right on the edge of the.
So what would you think though would be a replacement tree in, it's across the street from the lines, and it's like.
We really could do anything. We could do red oak. We could do sugar maple.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's far enough back where we can do whatever.
The idea is that, you know, the right place, the right tree. I'm sure you've heard Dave say it 100 times a lot.
True, but I'm not looking at the, like, you know, adding some small caliber trees along the scenic road. We need something of some significance, in, in some areas that still work, you know, across the street from the power lines, so trying to work with, with something here. So if you take out the, you know, invasive Norway maples at the corner, that opens up that entire corner.
So those are on the other side of the line, Dave?
Yeah, they're on the inside corner.
We could leave them, the way they are today.
These ones right there?
Yeah.
We could.
Right, but those ones are dead. These ones, I, I don't think that's the.
That's exactly.
Right.
Right?
Right. So we're talking about the dead ones.
Again, the question isn't the ones that are obviously dead. The questions, the question is going to be the ones that aren't dead that we might be able to do something with. So, um, let's move along. Board's good with these two?
Yes.
Okay, next one.
There's three, right?
Three.
A three, I'm so, well, one's, one's on private property, which.
On private, yeah.
Yeah, so, but anyway, it's fine. How about this one?
This next one is, uh, pole eight to nine. It's further up the street when you get to the next sharp corner, and it's the one that leans out over the road, has been hit by a plow. Um.
That gets hit by a plow, up on, on the embankment?
Either a plow or a car or whatever. Something is at it.
Yeah.
Ripped the bark off. And then they both looked the same, and it was kind of, with the oak, how it leaned, it does have a, you can't really see it in the photo, but it has a very heavy lean out over the, over the lines.
So what about just the lead that goes over towards the lines versus the entire?
You're still talking, taking half the tree away.
From the upper, the upper lead, not the entire, not at the Y, the height, the height, higher.
I believe this is the one we're talking about. This one right here? This is viewed from the other side?
Yeah, I think so.
So, so, so this is the view that way, so you can get an idea of where we're looking?
Right.
And I believe this is the one we're talking about, which, which kind of, here's the lead that you were talking about, which definitely isn't 50% of the tree, but it's, it's a part of the tree.
Now, if our tree warden thinks this, this is also, it's just a hazard on the proximity to the roadway.
Is the other side?
It's been hit. That's, that came up today with other trees, with, um, with our new tree contractor, hopefully on Friday, and we were going over trees that are being hit by plows.
Okay, so that one's problematic for, for the city? That's, that's fair to say. I, okay.
Any board member have any questions about that?
Let me, uh, I got to get back to the document here. Okay, we're good with that one?
Yes.
Oh, is this, is this, no, this is a different one. Nine, 10. Oh, yeah, eight, nine. This is the next one, nine, 10.
Yep.
Yep. And that's, on this right-hand side, that's this tall, straight one right here?
Yep.
Okay. James, did you have a, a similar comment to this one?
Yeah, the same. It's weird, so close to the road. I mean, again, unfortunately, I, I do agree with the size of the tree, but at the same time, with the, being a scenic road, it's obviously not even the wider, widest of roads either. So during the winter time, you, we can clearly see that from the aftermath that this is.
Shouldn't be a plow problem, because there's a berm there. Isn't, there's a pretty sizable berm there.
It was either a plow or a car, something definitely.
What's that?
It was either a plow or a car that.
You're right, yeah, that's another one. It could, very, these very easily could be car accidents, yeah, certainly.
It is, that one, at least it's on the same side as the power line, and it is. Not, I would just say, um, I'm talking about the diameter of the tree that's going to make much of a difference, that spot.
Okay.
But it looks like, but it looks like it's a hazard.
Yep.
Okay, everyone's good with that? Move on? Okay, next one.
13, 14, two large oak trees, 24 to 30 inches.
Okay. Dave, you want to give us a brief summary on these?
This is two larger trees. The first one that you see on the left, we'd be taking majority of the leads off that have grown back towards the lines. It's got a heavy lean over the road. We could just trim that one up. Um, the other one is, most of the weight is over the road, so we'd have to, in order for the new height, trim a lot of that tree.
So Dave, what you're saying, the one to the left, we can just do some light, light trimming to get by it?
Yep.
And then to the right, you can see where it's leaning towards the, the lines.
Yep. So we'd take out one and not the other one.
It's just hard to visualize. That one on the right just doesn't look, from, from the view, it just doesn't look problematic, but, um, let me go, let me go to the street scene.
Where the lines are.
Yeah, it does, just looks like it needs a haircut. Yeah.
Let me see, um, what pole is this?
This is pole 13 to 14.
See if I can get a pole number here. All right, this is 10.
Yep. So you got to go further up.
So we are, this, this one right here. Hold on. Okay, I got to get right in front of the pole to be able to see the pole number. Uh, 11. So it's up here. 12. So it's pole 13, you said?
Yep.
That's this one right here. All right.
So it'd be those two.
This, this tree right here?
Yeah.
So pole, pole 13's to my right, and then this one right here?
That one would stay.
Okay, and then this one.
So what's.
Yeah, it looks like it's.
Man, it looks like it's so far above that line to begin with. I mean, you're 20 feet above that line.
Yeah, it's not that far.
No, let me look at it from this side.
To judge it, but.
We could, we could take a look at it and see, we have the pole up, and we can go by it, and, and if the poles, we're also looking, when we're doing this, if a tree's going away from the power lines, we don't want to touch it. We really don't. We're trying to prevent if anything falls on the power lines. This is big, heavy construction. It breaks poles, outages are longer. So that's why we're trying, well, where they're doing this. If it's going away from it, we'll leave it. I, I really, I don't want to be touching, you know, anything more than we have to.
So, 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 so I don't remember you being in front of our board before. You might have.
I have.
But the reason why I say that is, in, in past years, it's always been, yeah, just take them down, and we get more complaints than anything else after the fact, saying, Unitil destroyed the scenic road. So that's why we're having this conversation.
Fully understand.
Okay, so let's, so those two, let's, let's, well, the first one apparently is fine.
Right.
The first one, we'll just, you do a light trim and leave, and then the second one, this one right here, we'll revisit, um, to see if we can trim or leave this one.
Yep.
Um, because even here, you know, obviously, it's hard to tell from here. You kind of need that side angle to see where it is in relation to your, um, your new pole. So, all right. So that was, uh, 13. Paul, you can track on these, 13, 14. So, so far, we have 13, 14.
Sorry, I wish I had a printout of the.
Hold on.
Of the.
Those are going.
First page.
So we're going to, so pole two and pole 13, 14, we're going to revisit.
Yep.
All right.
Yes, that's what I do have.
Okay. Let me zoom out a little bit here so we can get a better feel for these. All right, Dave, go ahead.
So this one is pole 13 to 14 again, but it's further up. Um, it's a sugar maple that has grown under the other larger tree trees. It's got a cavity stretching roughly about 10 feet down the trunk. There's a little hole, there's a hole that you can see a little bit better in the color photos. And it's right about at high, at, um, line light, line height, sorry.
James, do you have any comments on these particular trees?
So it's that smaller one that's there, that's.
This one on the left?
The top left?
Yep.
That one?
Is it?
Yeah, it's the one that's.
Is that the one that's leaning, it was leaning towards the pole? Oh.
So, so it's, is it this guy on the right-hand photo, or is it not in the right-hand photo?
It's in the.
So, so obviously, it's, well, this is the tree we're talking about, but it doesn't.
The little one in the right, right-hand photo.
This one right here?
The middle one.
Look at my cursor, right in the middle? Okay. Yeah, so that guy looks like, particularly when you get down, it looks, it looks, looks like it's in rough shape.
Right.
All right. See right there, you can see the split there. Yeah. Paula, I don't have a problem with it.
Nope. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, next. 13, 14, large sugar maple.
So there's a large lead that's right in the way of the lines. Um, once we take the lead out, we're removing rough, a little bit more than 30% of the crown, but it also will get decayed again in there into the tree further.
Did you have, just because I don't want to go back, did you have the diameter size? Because that looks like a huge tree.
Yeah.
This one is.
And it's next.
24 to 30 inch.
Yeah, it's a big one. And, and it's, how close is it to the 12 to 16 inch?
It's like right, right next to it.
Okay. So then, it's like, how many left are sugar maples in that spot?
There, there's definitely a few more in there. Um. Because there's a bunch that were either planted or grew in.
Trying to pull up the street scene, if you bear with me, because at least the street scene is, um, has some, um.
And this is where I don't, it's like, I question, as a layperson who, about, why 30% of the crown will kill the tree? What's 30%? Okay, versus, is there 70 or more than half in some cases, say 30%?
The 30% rule is through the, um, the Arborist standards, the Z1, uh, Z133 standards, whereas if you true, go through and prune 30% of the living crown off of a tree, you're damaging the tree so much that you're removing more than it can make, survive and, and cause more issues later on.
So it's like a rule of thumb?
Yeah.
Because I would just say, taking a third, a third down of all kinds of bushes and things like that is recommended in order to help promote growth, so it's like.
Bushes are different than trees, though.
So, so I'm pretty sure this is the tree we're talking about, because this is the fence you see in the background of that photo.
Yep.
So I think it's this one right here?
Yep.
So it's, so it's this right-hand side that's problematic?
Yep.
Yeah. And you take that off, and you're taking it there, and it's, the weight of the tree, I think, might be leaning towards that person's yard, too.
Right.
Um, because that looks like such a large portion of that tree, because it splits right there. If you can see, there's a big V right here. It splits.
It's like, if there's other of that, of maples that would benefit from getting.
It's pretty dense there. I mean, look at that photo. I know it's, might be hard for everyone to, for you guys to see there, but I'm looking at it pretty close up. There's pretty, uh, pretty tightly packed in there.
I'm not sure what it, anybody else have a view on that?
I have no opinion on that one.
Yeah, I, I say, take it if it needs to be.
If you think it's necessary, James, you think that's necess, it's necessary with 30%? Or you just take 30% and see how it goes?
But like Paul said, then I wonder if it's going to lean more towards that person's house.
Depends what the, right, if it's going towards the other direction.
Yeah, if, you know, the weight is that way.
Good point, good point.
I mean, it's hard to see, because these photos, when they got in the, in, in the board document, they're, they're not as clear. I can't, I can't zoom in, but this is another angle of it, and that tree splits, what, 10 feet off the ground? I mean.
Yeah, it's like seven.
That's got to be a rough, rough spot to, you know, trim that off there, and then you got kind of an awkwardly shaped and tree. Yeah. I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Other people?
Anybody else?
Anyone, especially anyone with strong opinions? This is the next one, I think, Dave. Correct? The one to the left of it?
I was going to say, this is also a hearing as well, so I'm going to take public comment after we go through these two. And we can revisit.
All right, so while I have the street scene up, because again, there's leaves on the tree, so it's a little bit easier. This is the one you're talking about.
Right.
Which is kind of a cluster of, what, four? It looks like four?
Yep.
Oh, it's still in that same, so it's still in that same area?
Yeah, it's right next to it.
Yep.
It's, it's right down.
You're talking about removing all of them?
Yep. We could take two of them and leave the back one. But I just don't know what it would do.
Is that town take right there? That looks pretty far.
It's, it says on it, it's a stone wall, but roughly seven feet from the curb. So this is another one where, you know.
Yeah, we want to make sure that works.
Yeah, if it's, I mean, if it's within the public way, that's one thing. Um, you know, again, I, I, I believe the board only has control over trees within the public way, uh, within the right-of-way.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether we.
No, no, it makes sense to ask for it anyway, because that way, you, you get their permission, you get the city's permission, you don't have to worry about it. Or you get our permission, they say no, then you leave it, or vice versa.
Right, exactly.
Um, you know, I, I, I think that I would particularly defer to the property owner in this one, if, especially if it's questionable, you know, if they want it taken, I say take it. If they want to see, you know, one or two or all four of those, it looks like they're.
The back one looks like it's leaned quite a bit, but we could take the front two and leave the back and see.
Right.
We'll talk to the customer, see what, you know, what they prefer on that.
Yeah, I think the only one that looks really problematic is that first, that first one.
Yeah.
Just a quick question for you, on that one tree?
Yep.
It has a, a cluster of three.
Yep.
Stems coming out of it. If that were to be replaced one for one in that situation, where, where would it go? Where would the new tree go? Would it still go in that location, close to the fence, on the other side of the fence?
We'd work with the tree warden and the landowner.
So it could, it could go anywhere in that area, pretty much.
Okay.
Especially if you grind the root base, as you know, the, trying to put it right there, even if you grind, you still have that root base there underneath.
If we.
The shift a little bit in one way or another.
With, with that one.
There's a lot of flexibility as to where these go.
I'd be afraid to grind if we took only one or two of those leads with that one, because you run the risk of damaging the other roots of the tree. They're still viable.
Everybody agree on that one to discuss with the property owners? It seems to be probably partially on their line, so.
And I believe we do have permission with the, with the landowner on that one.
So, so my suggestion for that one would be, it's okay to take the far-right one. Let's, let's attempt to save at least two of the interior trees.
Okay.
Um, because I can't tell from this, it looks like there's four, there might be three.
Yeah.
From that, um, you know, try and, try and keep as much as you can, especially that middle, those middle two are, you know, pretty tall, straight, theoretically healthy, at least from the Google street scene, so.
Yep.
But isn't, are you talking about that cluster? Aren't we deferring that to the?
Yeah, right, we're right. You still, yeah, you still, again.
They want it all down.
We still need the, we still need the property owner, and the property owner says, take them all. I would say that the board, I, I think the board should be fine with that, especially because they're more or less probably on his property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I'm okay with that.
I'm making notes of all those, so.
Pole 15, 16 is an oak of 12 to 16 inch diameter, has large crook in trunk, and heavy lean towards road and lines. Tree is grown in wall.
So it leans out from the other side of the road, over.
Say that again, Paul?
I just read what was on the.
Oh, sorry.
Pole 15, 16. It's an oak, it's 12 to 16 inch, large crook in the trunk. I'm not sure which.
That's the one that's on the opposite side of the road.
Is it this, is it the one with the S shape here?
Yeah.
So let me zoom in here, it might, again, the street scene, the street scene might be better.
Yeah, the street scene.
Let me see if I can find the street scene, but it's, it's, it's this one right here. It kind of leans over, let's see if we can find it. What poll was that?
Fifteen to sixteen.
Alright, so it's.
It's like, yeah, it's.
Getting there, I think.
I think you can turn around and look down the road.
Just because it's got, uh, it's got a heavy lean towards the.
It's that one right there.
It's interesting how it grew with the.
So this, poll sixteen, it doesn't look like a, the same, oh, this one right here?
Yeah.
Right there.
Yep.
So that's it right there.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, there's plenty of trees in that stretch, I.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions about that one?
Okay, next.
Poll sixteen seventeen, white pine under large oak, twelve to sixteen inches.
So there's a small little, uh, white pine that grew up underneath the oak. And when we, if we were to take the oak out, we would take down the, the, um, pine, just because of where the branches would land for the oak, it would end up taking out the pine tree. And then the, the large oak is the next one that's below it. So they're right side by side each other. And the oak's got that crack and it's a little bit of, some decay in there too.
So we're talking right here, where my cursor is?
Yep.
And then the one right after it?
Right next to it, to the.
Yeah, to the left, yep, this, this pine right here.
There's a different one, there's a different oak tree, two that would be staying, that.
Yeah, I see, so there's one close to the road, this one right here, actually, let me pull up the.
Yeah, there's, there's one that leans away from the lines and into the wood line, that isn't in the greater south, but it's not going to hit anything.
So.
So I didn't mark that one.
Hold on. These two, I believe? Yeah, because this is the pine you're talking about, hold on, let me go a little bit further back.
Yeah, I think it's all.
That's a, yeah, this is the best view I got, let me see if I can go this way, there we go. Alright, so this is the other view, this is facing north, towards, towards the array. So this is, this is one leaning inward, and this is the one you're talking about, and the pine's right after it?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose it's the same conversation we had with poll two, like, does it really have to go, but.
It's like, is it really, is it leaning towards the lines on that side? Versus like, pretty straight up?
Does it, this is a, this is a maintenance one, right, this isn't in the way of the pole itself?
Right.
This is trimming for maintenance, is what you're talking about, taking it down, because, so let me ask you this, you're, you're saying you think it's dying?
Yes.
And it needs to come down?
I think it's going to fail within.
Okay, James?
Five to ten years.
That was one that had decay.
Okay.
And it's in a spot where, if that was removed, you still have a decent amount of.
Trees.
Trees, like, where the other one is going the other way and where that one is towards the road and.
Like I said, I have no problem if you both agree that it's dying, being an arborist and being our representative, and again, James, I don't care what Unitil says, you're our representative, so if you say it can stay and you think it's okay, fine. But yeah, if, if, if it should, if you think it should come down, fine. I don't know, rest of the board, thanks.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, next one. So sixteen seventeen.
Twenty-three to thirty inch oak, trimming will remove thirty percent of the crown.
This is an oak.
In the trunk.
This is an oak right on the corner, that has a decent cavity, just below where the branch union is. So the thought process was that by taking it out, we would avoid, with the storms we've been having, breaking, it breaking out.
I will say that I recognize that tree, because it's close to the street.
Right.
And I, I, I've seen in the past, it's, it's, you can see it right here, this is edge of pavement, that's the tree.
It's like.
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm paused, I'm looking at it, you guys aren't, my fault, hold on one second. I just got to go back, so this is, this is edge of pavement, this is the tree right here.
Right.
So it's, it is one, and it's a relatively sharp corner on a narrow street, so this is the corner around, this is the tree right here.
It would help visibility around the corner.
Yep.
And then it would also, in the winter time, help with ice load on the roadway, being able to thaw out a little bit.
Yep.
Okay.
Any strong feelings on that one, rest of the board?
Nope.
No.
Okay, next one.
So next one's right on the corner, again, there's a bunch of pines, just three of them, ranging from sixteen to thirty inches, that are right along the wall, very close to the lines.
Yeah, it looks like the, it looks like some of them are quite a bit inside of that wall, like this one.
With the new configuration, even though the pole's in the same spot, because that pole had such a lean, and now it doesn't, the lines are even closer to the trees, unfortunately.
I, yeah, I only say that because of question.
Yeah.
Question of within the public way.
Right, right.
Like I said, it, it might be hard for everyone to see, but I'm looking right at it, that the, the one on the right is, looks three or four feet to the right of the wall.
It's like right within the wall.
Yeah, okay.
There's a few of them that are there.
So those three right there, Dave, there won't, no bark at all, and one to the left, is that the ones we're talking?
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get the in-between view here.
The landowner has given us the permission to remove all those.
Okay. There's, I mean, there's other pines around it too, so it's up to you, up to you guys.
Okay.
Okay, good, next.
Alright. The next one is across the street, same location, right on the same corner. It's directly over the lines. It's been previously put, been hit, and it's also hollow. Crown is more of a, starting to thin.
Is it this one with the posted sign?
Yep.
So here's the corner, here's the oak, here's the other pines on the other side of the street.
Yep.
So the solar arrays behind me, the proposed solar array, so is it this corner? Because this isn't, obviously, this isn't a pine, but, as a matter of fact, that tree looks quite dead, but that's another conversation.
I think that tree is actually not there anymore.
Okay, that, that looks very dead, so. This was, this was four years ago, five years ago, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's that tree right there.
Yeah, okay.
Again, the landowner gave us permission to take it out. We're just doing our due diligence to try and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
Does anybody have any questions on that one?
Is healthier pines a little bit further off the street there, so.
Yeah, then the last one's further up, it's a.
It's right before you get to the field, right?
It's like, yeah, it's like right at the field. Um, it's got, it's starting to die back, it's got a slight lean towards the line. Starting to decay roughly ten feet. Likely why is, why it's dying back in the, in the upper canopy.
See if I can locate this based upon, so here's the field here, so it must be a little further up?
Yeah, it's a little further up.
Right here?
Yep.
One of these two?
Probably that one right there.
That one right there? That's what it.
Yeah, it's like.
It's got to be further back, right this one right here, I think.
And that's on opposite side, Dave, by the looks of it.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I'm on the field side, right, it's right in this stretch somewhere. I suppose the good thing about looking through it this way is there's plenty of trees there.
A lot of trees on that road as well.
Yeah.
Again, that's another one that we can not do, it's fine.
No, I mean, I, like I said, I think that the fact that there's, there's a dense enough trees in that stretch, that thinning that out might make the other trees a little healthier anyway.
Right.
Right? If, if it's dying and the photos make it look like it is.
Yeah.
That's the last one, so.
Alright, so we just.
So I had notes on two, the poll thirteen fourteen, the two possible trims.
Yep.
Revisit those, so the one at poll two, the big one, what can we do if we take it off, if we leave it? And then the, the three to four stem basswood, poll thirteen fourteen, you know, potentially at a minimum, remove the two trunks closest to the line.
Yep.
Leave the other two, unless the property owner said he wants them all gone, in that case, it's probably on his property anyway. That sound like a good summation of?
So I had poll one, we're leaving one Norway maple out of the three.
Poll one, leave the right.
Let me go back to one, because I started keeping track a little, a little bit late in the game. So, yes, so right, so this, so this one, right, this one between, the, the, the one Norway maple between one and two, the healthier of the three can stay. Okay.
Poll two will try not to do anything to it, depending on where the pole location is.
Yeah, so why don't we, I mean, maybe the best way to, to deal with poll two is, you know, to orchest, maybe orchestrate a time, we go look at it.
Sure.
Yeah, we have the bracket up there already, so we have a pretty clear view of what we need to be trimmed.
Okay.
So we'll make it as small as possible, once again, we just want to make sure what's best for the tree and for the customers, so, we understand.
And, so what we can do, my suggestion, Paul, and obviously, you, you tell me you're, you're in charge, my suggestion would be, take a vote on the, the ones we know about, and just leave the conversation about poll two for now. That way, if you decide you want to do all of the trimming for the ones that we do end up approving, and, you know, we meet in two and, you know, we say either leave it and it stays, or take it or take part of it, you can do that when you find, when you're back up there, whenever. That would, because our next meeting's not till end of August, so. We can't, even if we meet on site, we still have to take a board vote, and we still need James to vote on it too, because it's a joint hearing, so. So that'd be my suggestion, Paul?
What's the board's pleasure in that?
Yeah, I agree.
Sounds good to me. Vote on the.
So it'd be authorization of removal of all the trees and the document, documents provided, well, tell you what, tell you what, let's not jump ahead, let's take public comment first, because I know there's some, let's take public comment, then we'll talk about all that sort of stuff.
And is there anybody in our virtual session that?
I didn't look, hold on, I'm.
Is there hand raised?
Would bet my right leg, there's someone here that's going to speak, though.
Yeah, great.
No, there's no one, no one virtual, no hands up.
Alright.
There's actually no attendees, Paula, for future reference, it's just board members.
Okay.
There's no virtual attendees.
Alright, and does anybody in our present audience would like to speak on the matter?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Stand corrected.
None.
So, so my suggestion would be to authorize the removal or cutting, as noted in the package provided, with the exception of the tree at poll two, the tree at poll one, between one and two, excuse me, the one Norway maple that we discussed between one and two, and then the conversation about the basswood, which is kind of, it, it, I think the vote will be in, you have the authority to take it down if the property owner sees it as a liability and they want it gone. If the property owner is either indifferent, or if you can't get in touch with them, this, I think the board, that the appropriate suggestion would be, take the two stems that are closest to your line, leave the two that are the other way. And I think that.
And then.
And then poll thirteen fourteen. We have, we have.
Trimming both of them if we need to.
If you need to remove them, maybe just come back, do.
Exactly.
Come back.
My suggestion would be, we'll authorize, we'll authorize trimming.
Right.
You know, a, a, let's say a light trim, and, and if you need to do either a complete topping or, you know, a substantial removal, then just come back and ask for it, and we'll talk about it.
Yeah, a kill trim versus a, you know, a little buzz trim. So the same thing with the, right, so the poll two and the thirteen fourteen, so it was just like, we'd see what we can do to keep them if they, they, you think they really do need the, more substantive, then come back, that way you can move forward on these other aspects of it.
What made this really difficult also was, this is probably one of the narrowest roads you've ever worked on in Pittsburgh, so trying even to get a utility line in there is very, you know, very diff, Mount Helem had its own challenges, but this one is actually even harder, because it's even narrower than Mount Helem.
You know, you just, you, it does bring to the forefront a little bit more about what's involved with solar aspects, that I think, and there were narrative too, it's like, these poles are actually going to be taller to some degree.
Yeah, they're all, they're all taller.
These are taller poles, they're going to have heavier wires on them.
Which then puts it up further where we've been trimming from before, which makes it harder.
The infrastructure that's required for, I'll say, some of, some of these solar aspects, the infrastructure is outside of the premises.
And that's a big issue.
Aspects like that to think about.
Typically, we place it with smaller wires and we'd have smaller poles there, but with the amount of power generated, we need the largest stuff to bring it back, and we're mandated to connect to them, so it's, it's, it's not something that we always want to do, but it's something that we, you know, that we're required to do, and we're trying to work with that and do what's best for the town.
Bring more reliability to the customers that are there.
Changes where the, um, protection devices go as well. So this part goes out, it goes all the way back to, I mean, it knocks out the whole circuit, so we're talking Ashburnham Hill, Applewild.
Westminster, Westminster Hill Road.
Westminster Hill Road.
Alpine Road.
The whole, that whole area, unfortunately.
Huge impact for us, so there's, there's, there's an awful lot to it, as I'm sure we all, you know, are aware of, so. We don't take it lightly.
Yeah, the, the, the poll installations at the site, does the council approve the poll locations, or?
These are on, these are on town take, I mean, I'm sorry, not on town take, these are on public property, so.
Private property.
Yes, they're all private property.
I was just curious, because when we talk about scenic roads, I know utilities aren't part of, utility locations aren't part of scenic roads, but you would think it would be when you're dealing with, you know, large scale transmission lines, oh, I, not large scale, but multiple transmission lines.
Yeah, our first pole's fifty feet off the road from the main line pole, so.
Okay.
It, it doesn't, it's not right along.
Yeah, a lot of the ones that we've dealt with in the past have been right at the road, where you have a five, you know, five poles within whatever, ten feet apiece, or whatever it ends up being.
We require fifty feet in between for that reason, and plus, we want to be able to work on them safely to do so, so trying to spread them out a little. Of course, they want them all compact, for whatever reason they may have, but, you know, we have to work on these things for the next twenty, thirty years, so.
Yeah, and how, because I know we have one more counselor who has asked me this, and I keep telling him, I don't know the answer, and I'm sure you do, why can't they bury those five lead poles instead of doing utility poles into the transmission, into the array site?
It has been done in the past, I don't know if it is a, a, a cost with the, with the generator themselves, which is the solar, but we've, we've been basically by, by public utilities, to come up with the best physical means without putting undue burden on, on the customer, on, on the solar generator.
Just seems like, not only is it more reliable, you don't have to deal with issues, but it's also cleaner too. Because we mandate it with, with public, with private developments now, but we, we, we've been told we can't mandate it with solar arrays, but I think that's one thing we're going to look at.
We've had the same type of mandate, that we're not allowed to mandate this type, if it's overhead construction right now, that, that we're basically have to allow the overhead construction.
We've had, I, I'm almost certain, we've had solar companies tell us that Unitil does the pole locations, and that they have no input whatsoever on one end of it, so anyway. The reason why I asked that question is, where are we doing our, in the very near future, we're looking at redoing our solar ordinance, and I, that's going to be one of the things that I'm going to push when we start, and we require buried transmission lines from the street to the array.
Perfect question for the DPU.
Don't we?
I would think.
Well, we'll be willing to work with it, whatever, you know, whatever we need to do, it's, it's.
Nope, just a question.
Just a question.
So, James, as we were looking at making those tweaks of the, leaving like the one Norway near poll one, and then poll two, the thirty inch oak, just trying to do a, you know, a buzz cut versus, you know, a full cut, and same with thirteen and fourteen, to see what can be done, if you're okay, and agree with that, to see what can be done with them, and, you know, if they have to be taken out, then put forth another, they can come back again to.
My suggestion next time, and I already said it once, my suggestion next time, especially with these, if you decide, poll two, we got to do something about that giant tree, or one of the other ones, there's an issue with the way we worded it, let's do a sidewalk, because.
And I apologize, I.
It's fine.
No, and.
The easiest, the easiest way to do this is to all be together, look at them and say, yeah, take it.
Right.
Because you know, you gotta, you gotta be under the tree, see, especially now that you have your poles up, it would have been easier doing it that way, so in the future we'll do it that way.
We can schedule a sidewalk with the board, we just post it and stuff and do that.
Yeah, no, and I apologize for that.
No, 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 no worries, just future, in the future.
So what else I, unless the board has other comments or reservations about this, but I'd like to set a timeline, whether it's like, you know, if you think 60 or 90 days is amenable to submitting some type of a planting plan, number of trees, and type along Alpine.
Okay.
Like that.
How long do you think is a comfortable amount of time? Are you, are you going to plant this, this growing season or next year?
It'll be in the spring.
So.
Okay.
We had to finish all the construction before because we don't want to plant anything as we're cutting down all utility poles and everything, causing any damage.
We just want to like, you know, you would submit this in 30, well, they'd submit a plan to us.
Yeah, I can get a, I can get a plan.
But then, and then the completion of the installation by X date, so you have two dates, submission of the planting plan by, I don't know.
He was just saying, he was just about to say a date, you can get it done by?
By September 30th.
September 30th.
September 30th, so a planting plan, and then completion by like June 30th of next year. Does that sound okay, James, as well? Time to look at the planting plan and everything too, so been working with our tree warden to.
Do you want me to just submit it to the board or do you want me to come back in with it?
Just submit it.
Yeah, I think, you think, well, and again, making sure they're appropriate to the scenic road.
Yep.
You know, we're trying to make it more, keep the scenic.
If you have any questions, we can come back.
Yeah.
Does that sound okay?
Yep.
Are there going to be specific trees you're looking for to be replaced?
No, what, I would say what you guys determine is adequate for the location and.
Yeah, they don't have to be in that specific spots, but it's like where would be more straightaways or, I know, away from the pole lines you see more space that, it's like, hey, you know what, a good oak would great over here, doesn't have to be anywhere near where you took them down, but it's just trying to keep that ambiance and the aesthetic of that scenic road and the stone walls and, and aspects.
Got it.
So that's, that's kind of, that's the intent, so in the past, let's just say it's been this, you know, right tree, right place, but it's just been left and I think it's been more, I think it's, we should really work towards like, let's get the planting plan, let's, so to be worked on to say it's going to be planted there and not elsewhere in the city, we need it kind of back and to reestablish and start growing, so past our time, another 60 years from now will be somebody else, it's like, it's still look like scenic road, maybe in a better layout. So that, that being said, there was no public comment.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
There's a motion's been made to.
Hold on, what?
It would be 18 replacements, right?
What's that?
It would be 18 replacement trees?
However many that were being, and it's like, right.
And I would always say at a minimum, if you can find, if you find a neighbor that has, you know, that some of those lots have, have some, you know, clear frontage.
Yeah.
If they have clear frontage and they want six trees and it puts you at 25, I'd say that, you know, the more you can do, the better.
Okay.
So yeah, minimum, minimum's one, minimum's one to one.
Yeah.
Yep, and we're down to 18, it came up, the hearing was what, 21 trees?
Twenty-two at first, we took off two and then from pole one and two and then thirteen, fourteen, we're just trimming those two.
So, so just because we don't know what we're doing about thirteen, fourteen, why don't we just say 20 at a minimum?
Okay.
I think you can find a spot for 20 trees.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
You have a motion.
Well, there's a motion to close the hearing, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, and roll call, Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
All right, discussion.
I, I just would make the motion that I previously made in the same way I made it. I, I can send it as best I can to you, Chantel, but you might have to watch the meeting to get the gist of it.
All right, we had regarding specifics, it was about pole one, pole two, pole thirteen, fourteen.
Do you want me to re, do you want me to reiterate because I have it here?
Yeah.
So I have, so I have, tentatively, we're leaving pole two as is until we, they, we determine further what, what they want to do with it, pole, the one Norway maple between one and two is staying, two possible trims between poles thirteen and fourteen, the three to four stem basswood between thirteen to fourteen, ideally remove the two stems closest to the power lines, leave the two further away from the power lines unless the property owner wants them removed or they deem it to be an issue with their property, it's okay to remove, in that case, provide the planting plan by September 30th and new trees to be planted by June 30th, 2025.
Minimum of 20 trees.
Minimum of 20 trees.
And on that pole, the 30 inch oak at pole, near pole two, there is, still could do a little light trim, but not a.
Yeah, we'll come back with, if we need to do something.
That being said, is there a second?
Second?
And I like, kind of make sure I do this, do this, and all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, and I'm going to ask James.
Aye.
Aye. Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, James.
Thank you, that's a lot of trees.
And again, I apologize about that.
No, no, no.
No apology necessary.
Now I know going forward.
Nope, no apology necessary. We'll get there. All right.
We have special permit in site plan review for AG Dreamflip LLC that was proposing to build a multifamily PUD.
Do you want me to read the request?
Of, let me finish, consisting nine units, single, four family, four duplex buildings on Zero Fairmont Street, this was continued from our May 28, 2024 meeting, and there has been another request to continue, now you can read it.
Yep. So this is on behalf of Chris Anderson, the engineer for the applicant, on behalf of the applicant, AG Dreamflip, we'd like to request a continuance with our testimony for the Fairmont Depot Street hearing to the next available meeting, at the previous conservation hearing, they requested a peer review of the wetland delineation be performed. We received confirmation from Helen that the reviewer was on site yesterday, we have a meeting with conservation on August 7th, and would like to make sure all major concerns from conservation are addressed at the meeting prior to returning to the planning board.
All right.
I'll make a motion to continue to our August meeting.
Okay. Second. Motion to continue to August meeting, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, and roll call vote, Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
To August meeting. All right. We have, next on our agenda is site plan approval of the applicant, Brian T. Anderson, proposing to expand the parking for the existing business of a funeral home to an adjacent lot at 236 Chester Street in the residential A district. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Craig Roy with Dillison Roy and I'm here with.
Phil Jordan.
Thank you, representing the applicant this evening, as you referenced, we're here for site plan approval for the funeral home and specifically relative to the parking area that, that sits across the street from the, from the funeral home, thank you for the plan, I appreciate it, and just a little bit of history, we've been working on this for a few months, the, the property on the, I'm going to call it left, left-hand side on the corner of Delisle and Chester Street, sits on a piece of land that's owned by the funeral home, but is accessory to the, to the funeral home, and so because it is zoned residential A, RA, and is accessory parking, it required a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, so we, before coming to your board, we filed that special permit with the zoning board of appeals, they did grant that permit a few months back, I think we just got that decision last week, so that is, that's now available. And so essentially what we're proposing to do is to make some parking modifications to the area, historically speaking, that lot had a structure on it that was demolished several years ago, and there is now located parking, paved parking on the property that's, that's used for the funeral home, we were contacted to try and formalize that a little bit, see if we could get some efficiency to add a few more spaces, which is why we're here today, so I, I don't know if we could maybe go to C4 of the, that one's good.
This one's fine.
Yep, that one's great, so we've effectively made modifications to the, to the parking area to allow us to add 10 spaces, there was 40 some odd spaces and we're, we've added 10 to that, and the, there's, there's, there's currently two access points, there's an access to Delisle Street and there's also a very wide unconsolidated access to Chester Street, our proposal will maintain the Delisle access, access point in the, in the configuration that it is today, and then close off most of the access along Chester Street, starting at Delisle Street and working, working down, working down approximately 10 parking spaces or so, and then consolidate that curb cut right where that C in Chester is, you can see that, that gravel construction access there, that would be where the, where the consolidated entrance would be. Unlike some part, conventional parking lots, because this is a funeral home, unfortunately, we probably all had the opportunity to attend a funeral, we are taking advantage of some stacked parking, so you can see that in the middle, we have three, three stripes, so that the idea there is if folks are going to be attending, you know, service at the, at the cemetery, that they would be stacked in those locations and there'd be parking lot attendance like you'd, like you'd be accustomed to at a, at a funeral, so we, using that, we were able to take advantage of all the space, essentially, we're keeping the, the configuration of the current pavement along the, the two abutting properties to the left and to, and the bottom of the screen, with the exception of, in the, in the bottom corner, we're actually pulling out some, some pavement there that ended up being an area where we could add some green space back in because it effectively was, was wasted space, the existing garage structure, which, which remains, is used and will continue to be used for the hursts and for the, the vehicles that the funeral home uses. Two other things I wanted to mention, we, we worked with the DP, we had a meeting with the DPW with Ryan from the DPW on site to talk about both the, our proposed curb cut consolidation, but also stormwater, there is a little bit of a concern, the catch basin in the, in the street, corner of Delisle and Carl, and Chester Street in the, in the right of way, over the past summer got overloaded, I guess what didn't get overloaded last summer with the storms we had, but, but be that as a may, there was some, there was some issues with capacity of that grate, so we worked with Ryan, we're actually proposing another structure in the site that will cut off a large portion of the flow that would go to that, that, the existing catch basin, will be capturing it and then, and then discharging it to the storm drain underground, so on the, the parking, up against the parking, we're actually proposing Batumina's Cape Cod berm all along the Delisle, parallel to Delisle Street and then also parallel to Chester Street, so that all the runoff flows down, is caught by the, by the Cape Cod berm and is directed to that catch basin on our property, so it doesn't get discharged to the street pavement, which was, I think appreciated by, by Ryan and crew. We're actually reducing the amount of impervious area on the site, so the stormwater overall as it discharges to the city's storm drain is actually reduced, so there's a little bit of an advantage there as well, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention is we did submit a landscaping plan with the, I think it's the last sheet of our, of our set, or one of the last sheets, thank you, yep, and I apologize, the parking striping is, came out yellow here, but, so it's hard to see, but on Delisle Street, the dark, the, the sort of darker green, if you will, right adjacent to, there's seven or eight trees there adjacent to the existing entrance, those are existing trees that we're proposing to leave, mature trees, and then from that point all the way around to the new, the new consolidated access point, we're proposing to add some landscaping in that location, and then the same thing, you can see the corner, the bottom corner where we've added some green space, we're also proposing to add some, some, some landscaping in there, which is adjacent to some of the residential, adjacent residential property, and the only other thing that I'll mention is we're also improving on the actual, on the opposite side of the street, we're, we're going to restripe the, the parking spaces in the front of the building to accommodate ADA accessibility, so we're formalizing the, the plan also formalizes ADA spaces on the, on the right-hand side of the street, if you will, and I think, I will leave it at that, happy to take any questions.
Did you have any feedback from any of the abutters after the notice?
I did not have any, there was interest at the zoning board of appeals meeting relative to one of the abutters I think north of us, I'm calling that north, I'm not sure. Had some interest in the stormwater, I haven't heard anything since, we, we haven't heard anything as part of this process.
And has the ZBA, did the ZBA provide any conditions?
They did, I can read those for you.
Yeah, I just tried to look, it hasn't been recorded yet, did you know that?
It's still, I think it appeals, believe it or not.
Oh, okay, perfect, oh, that's true, you just got it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was issued on the 15th of July.
Perfect.
So I'll just read the conditions if that's acceptable, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
With the above findings, the zoning board of appeals on motion in the affirmative voted five to zero under the sections of the ordinance to approve the special permit with the following conditions, one, the special permit allows the subject lot to be used for parking accessory to the pre-existing non-conforming funeral home used on the opposite side, on the opposite lot at 360 and Claritin Street, two, the planning board site plan review is required by separate relief, so that's why we're here this evening, three, the applicant shall seek to mitigate any effects of stormwater runoff on abutting properties in coordination with the DPW and as directed by the planning board and shall obtain DPW curb cut approval, so we have initiated that process and that's, that's how we generated the plan, we do understand that we'll need curb cut approval, formal curb cut approval, four, landscaping shall be provided on all sides as appropriate for the residential neighborhood and as directed by the planning board, so again, we've provided you with the landscaping, the proposed landscaping plan, five, parking shall be striped and directional signage indicating traffic flow installed, so we, we do intend to do that and it is shown on the plan, and the applicant shall, and six, the applicant shall install signage indicating that the parking area is to be used for funeral home only, which is certainly something that the applicant is interested in doing, and that was it.
Yeah, I'm glad they touched on it because that was my only, my only real concern is that you want to make it known that if this lot ever transfers in the future, that it's not a commercial parking lot for something other than the funeral home, so.
Yeah, it's accessory use, so.
Yep, and then the other thing, let me just pull up the aerial, the only other thing that I originally had a concern about, and it's, it's not really a concern, I don't think, where the space is behind the garage because they point towards the residential use, but they're significantly behind the houses, so it's really just light glare that I was worried about, but it's, both the houses that, that are on Chester are, are in front of the garage, so light spill shouldn't be on anywhere near the houses themselves because those lot, those.
And there is some, there is some vegetation there that we're not touching.
Perfect, wonderful, good.
I have copies of the decision, would you like?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Two copies.
And I had another question, in the narrative, it discussed that there was a dumpster, but I didn't see one on the site plan, is there really, is there a dumpster?
We don't use dumpsters, we have the typical city recycling barrels, about four of them in the garage that we roll in and out as needed.
How does the funeral home have city recycling barrels? Commercial properties don't qualify for city pickup?
I can't answer that, there was a residential upstairs, it's not used as residential, but.
Okay.
I, I saw that same thing as I was reading the narrative and I was wondering if you'd, if you'd ask that question, so.
Honestly, it's much cleaner than the dumpster, you know, and there's no neighbor issues of, you know, illegal dumping, we roll everything in, it's nice and neat constantly.
Yeah, there might be interest about what debris a funeral pilot might have, but yes, so if, so I guess I would just say, I mean, I, I'm fine, overall, the site plan looks pretty good, it was just whether or not, you know, do you need to designate a place? It was just whether or not, you know, do you need to designate a place for a dumpster? So, we would just say that there would be no dumpster. And if there was a dumpster, it'd have to be screened like white vinyl or something that's for the decoratively in the area, and not against an abutment premises.
Right. Yeah, so, I mean, effectively, we're not proposing any changes to that. And if anything was proposed in the future, we'd...
So, I think one of the permit conditions will spell out that because no dumpster location is provided, that either in-building trash collection or other trash collection is provided other than, you know, no dumpster unless you come back and we verify a location.
That'd be fine.
Does any board member have any comments or questions?
No, I think it's a very well-thought-out and clean plan. You know, right from the stormwater to the landscaping to the stack parking, nicely done. I think it'll complement the business very nicely.
I'm glad to see that you helped, you know, close off some of those street entrances to make the driveway accesses.
Yeah, it'll get you more compliant with the driveway distance from intersections that the ordinance has, so...
This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience here that would like to speak on this matter? And then, I will ask virtually. I know we've said there's no one aside from board members there.
Still no attendees.
Still no attendees. So, we don't have any public comment. Does the board, are there any feedback from any departments, Chantel?
If you look underneath the hearing section, all the comments are there. I did get some last-minute ones today, so...
Okay.
I thought I just looked right before, I might have missed it.
Is it underneath this meeting, 7:30? I think I saw something from Ryan, but it's already been addressed.
Oh, good.
What's it, hearings, maybe? Oh, yes, under hearings.
Oh, it's on the header, okay.
On the hearings, the...
I looked under the meeting header before. All right. Let me open all these separately and... All right, so let's start with this one. No comments from Water. Let's go to the next one. Ryan, all right. C attached word doc. Do you want me to read them? There's quite a few. So, it's from engineering. It says, "It was discovered by engineering site inspection, the existing catch basin..."
Just want to put it up on the screen.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it would be hell.
Yeah, I know, I keep pausing the screen and then doing other stuff I gotta find, hold on. "It was discovered by engineering site inspection," this is what Greg was talking about, "that the existing catch basin on the southwest corner of Chester and Delisle is serviced by an eight-inch pipe connection to the existing drain manhole and an eight-inch storm drain running easterly along Delisle to Clarendon to address capacity issues in the area. The eight-inch storm drain piping should be upsized to 12-inch from the proposed design point to Clarendon Street." I assume that's what you were talking about, Greg?
Well, yeah, we did get this from him. So, we, yeah, we're aware of that.
Well, we'll leave it the same way as it were to be for it. You guys work it out with them.
Well, exactly. We realize we have to satisfy the DPW.
"Crosswalks should be designed at the intersection of Chester and Delisle to provide ADA access from the parking lot." You had mentioned that, I believe. That was the other thing you mentioned?
I didn't mention a crosswalk.
Oh, no, you mentioned something about ADA. I'm sorry, I was doing something else.
Oh, ADA, we're doing ADA parking. What does that say?
It says to provide ADA access from the parking lot across Chester Street.
Yeah, I think we're mitigating that because we're putting all of the ADA on the building side, so I don't think we'd have to have... It's not to say that we shouldn't have a, that there shouldn't be a cross, there couldn't be a crosswalk there for folks that are parking, but...
I know the funeral homes generally are very well orchestrated as far as people knowing where to go and how to get places with people outside, but a safety issue, if we're parking across the street from a use, there probably should at least be a crosswalk.
Yeah, I don't think we'd object to that.
So, whatever's required from that. And then, it says on the 22,057 square foot, excuse me, 2,257 square foot of landscaping that's proposed, much of the area falls within the city right-of-way. Well, this, oh, okay, he's talking about along the street. I was thinking about the corner. Well, this is not prohibited, the applicant should be responsible for its maintenance. So, it's basically saying, "Take care of the stuff you plant along the street," even though it's within the public right-of-way.
Absolutely.
Nor the city be implied as responsible for landscape areas, maintenance, trimming of tree shubs. So, one of the permit conditions should be that the landscaped areas along the right-of-way be maintained by the property owner, because it would be inherent that even if we allow them to put them there, that the city would ultimately be responsible unless we say otherwise. So, that should be a permit condition that just, you know, cut the grass and whatever. I know you guys, again, we're lucky that funeral homes generally take good care of their properties, so...
Yeah, it was done two months ago, all the hangers and the trees were all taken down, everything that was dead, overhanging, only because anything that falls, falls on people.
Yeah, well, we're talking more about the new stuff that he has on the planting.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yep, it'll be well-maintained.
Excellent, awesome. "Wastewater connection permit associated with connection fees will be applied for alongside..."
I don't know if that would be applicable.
You're not doing anything to the building, right?
No.
Okay. "All work within the right-of-way, shall be performed by a contractor who's bonded, who's in good standing with the city, contact DPW Engineering." That's a thing they put on every department letter that we see. "Water surface installations," you know water service, right?
Right.
"Sewer drain installations, you would not doing any of..." Oh, drainage, if you do drainage work. They just want to inspect the drainage work. And then sewer and drain covers must match city standards.
Yep. No issues with any of those.
Okay. And then, wastewater has nothing, obviously. Board of Health, I assume, has nothing. Board of Health has nothing. No comments. That's the rest of them.
All right. That being said, the board have enough information to make a decision this evening. All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Roll call vote. Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And now, discussion?
So, my suggestion should be the three things we talked about, that because there's no dumpster location provided on the plans, that a permit condition would be that a dumpster is not allowed on the site unless the plan is revised to show the location. That a crosswalk should be provided from the parking area to the adjacent accessory use, the funeral home, and that the street trees and plantings, both on the property and, more importantly, within the public way, be maintained by the applicant.
So, the crosswalk, though, might not be potentially possible, so we need to have a...
So, I would say explore the possibility of a crosswalk.
Or just maybe just say, "Subject to city approval," or something like that. Thank you. That's all.
That's perfectly fine. And then, the only other thing would be our standard permit condition, which is going to be in there anyway. It's going to be satisfaction of both two things. The conditions imposed by the zoning board of appeals and appropriately addressing the letters from DPW Engineering.
Can I ask a question? A list of waivers were included too, are we...
Yeah, so the way the decision will be written, I'll put in the, it's a good idea, we can put it in...
And we grant the waivers.
We can just put that we're granting the waivers that were requested.
No, thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it would have to be in the decision.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Because it definitely, so there's a list of waivers for design standards, which I have up, but no one can see.
Here they are. It's the 20-foot frontage.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, waivers requested to allow seven parking spaces to be striped without a 24-foot maneuvering aisle, as Greg had alluded to. And we've done with, we actually did with churches before, and I'm certain we did it with funeral homes, where there's a different type of use there, so we're certainly very aware that it's not a traditional parking style, that because it's solely for the funeral home, I think that that's fine. Waivers being requested allow the existing edge of pavement to be maintained within three feet of the property line and existing garage, fine. The landscaping requirements, because you're not meeting the minimum area, I believe, that's fine. And then landscaping requirements for parking areas being requested to allow the applicant to maintain the existing edge of pavement, which provides less than 10-foot minimum buffer depth.
Anybody have any questions about that, waivers? Board members?
So, I would just add that to my motion that we're granting the waivers in our decision. Thank you, Chantel.
All right, so, with that motion.
Just need a second.
All right, there's a motion with a second. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed. Allyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
I guess before we go back into other business, just to revisit the minor site plan, 491 electric ab...
There are no attendees, I just double-checked.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant virtual attendees. You are who we're looking for, though.
Yes. Please come up to the podium, please come up.
Let me see, so let me pull up what was sent to us. I just gotta find the email, so you have to bear with me for one second. So, that was, this is not the right email.
Oh, okay.
All right, so shortly after our last meeting, I don't know if you want to open it, Paula, and then...
Yes, this is continued from our June 25th meeting, and we were asking for additional information. So, we wanted to know, based upon the parking table, how many seats you were going to have, so we can figure out how many parking spaces are necessary to figure out how we can approve the plan, if it's a minor site plan or a major site plan. We also got, we got a preliminary site plan that was submitted from maybe the owner, the management office of the plaza. We did ask for some additional information from them that they still have not provided.
I got in contact with the owner of the local, and then he said that he have already sent it over. I'm not sure.
I think this is probably what he's referring to, which is what we received after our last meeting. So, why don't we start with the simple question that I think you can answer, then we'll get to that. How many seats, how many patrons are you anticipating to have at your church?
So, every, 20 people.
I'm sorry, say that again?
20.
20 people?
Yes.
Okay. Are there individual seats? How do we do that? Because churches are by seat, right?
Yeah, they need some kind of, like, about how many...
Chairs.
Chairs, like, right, because it sucks about, do you have that email? Because I don't have...
Yeah, I have the email.
I didn't have the, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, too.
No, no, that's fine.
The table with the requirement.
Yep, hold on.
I left with every, not grabbing anything, and I'm like, I left my sacred Bible, my zoning ordinance.
I can pull that up for you, too, but I don't have the email you have. Oh, was it the one you just sent the other day to all of us about the meeting?
Here we go. Semptuses. Use of land or structures for religious purposes. One parking space for each five seats, or where benches are used, one space for each 10 linear feet of bench. Where no fixed seats are used as like a museum or open space. For each 100 square feet of public floor area, there shall be one parking space. So, it's like how much public floor area is there, if you looked at it that way? But how many, like, either benches will you have, or seats? Like, are you, it's for a church, but how many seats? When you hold an event there, how many tables and chairs will you have? How many chairs will you have?
So, I do church right now, I think we have 60 seats, like, chairs inside of the local place, so, yeah.
So, 60?
Yes.
That's 30 spaces, right? Per five, you said?
Per five.
Oh, hold on. 12, 12 spaces.
Yes, so we said that, though, I know, it turns into a major site.
Major site plan.
It's a major site plan, yes. The 12 spaces, 60.
So, the way the city code works is we have minor site plan, we have major site plan. Anything over 10 parking spaces is a major site plan review. So, that's why, we're trying to figure out how many spaces are required for your use. And then, the other question we had, which was the original question for the property owner, how many spaces are taken up by all the other uses that are in the plaza? To get a calculation to figure out how many spaces they have versus how many spaces they need. And that's kind of what we were trying to figure out in talking to the property owner.
And when you, when do you use these spaces? When do you tend to use the spaces particularly? Like, all at once, like, when you hold your events?
Okay, so, there's like, we use the church, it's like Sunday, Mondays, and Thursdays.
What are your hours of service on those days?
So, the service on Sundays, on Monday, we got two curves, like, one, nine to 12, and then we're at seven to nine.
Okay.
And then, Mondays, we have curves like nine to 12 on Mondays, and then Thursday, seven to nine.
Okay. And what was the Sunday time, you said?
Oh, the Sunday is like nine to 12, and then seven to nine.
So, nine to 12, seven to nine, the three days you're open. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, is that what you said? Sunday, Monday, Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're just trying to get an idea for when the spaces are going to be in use, so, okay.
Because you may need, like, up to 30 spaces all at once for this, for those time periods, that's all.
I would say that, yes.
Yes, yeah. So, that's what we're trying to make sure is available with all the other uses going on in the plaza, that there's enough parking for this use to be located there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all we're seeking to do. So, we need additional information from the property owner, like, out of your control, of like, what's the layout of, what all the other units are, what their type is. We have a parking table in the zoning ordinance. So, if it's 2,500 square feet and it's being used as a restaurant, then there's a certain amount of parking you need for that based upon the square footage or the number of tables that they have. So, we need to take all of that, put it together, and say, hey, all at once, it can support all these uses, there's enough parking. Or he has to create, or maybe there's a way that they can create some additional parking. There looks like there may be some additional space there that they haven't used, that they could provide. But we need to talk with the owner about that to make sure that also the functioning of the plaza, we do have some concerns, I'll say, regarding the opening on Franklin Road, where it's just wide open. Again, outside of your control, but there needs to be a little bit improvements to be made there for safety purposes.
Yeah, after our last meeting, we got in contact with the owner of the location, and then we told him that we need like the official site plans of the place and all the information, you guys asked me for it. And then, you say you would be sending them over to this, we give your email address, I'm telling him to send it over, and then you said I have send them. So, I'm going to get back in contact with him again to see if he could send them as soon as possible.
As we're open to having additional conversations to get the information, so we're here to help.
Yes, yes.
We're trying to draw it, we're trying to...
I just hate being stuck in the middle of this whole...
Yeah, we're trying to draw it out, and we do want to help you move forward with this and work with the property owner as well, because we want him to be also successful, everybody to be successful here in regards to it.
You know what's really interesting about this site? If you look at the screen, that's the GIS imaging. So, according to our GIS, the half of the Cumberland Farm site is part of this. The pumps themselves, the property that, so the vacant lot, which is apparently taxed separately, which used to be, was still behind Wyman's, which is just kind of the no-man's land that they have there, that's part of their property, and again, and so is the Delicious Dips Plaza, the one with the three tenants, Park Hill Pizza and Delicious Dips.
Well, the other part of the Plaza is ours.
Right, as well as the Old Rendezvous, which is at the end. These are all the same owner, A1Q Park Hill... These are all the same owner, A1Q Park Hill Plaza LLC. But the site plan...
This is as well.
What's that?
This is as well, and...
Wait, that's the one I was talking about? That's the vacant piece of land.
Yep.
The, it's hard to tell from the site plan exactly what, yeah, I guess it, yeah, I guess it has everything, yeah, I guess it has the same parcel. It changed though, remember when we did the front plaza, when Paul D. Toronto came in front of us maybe 10 years ago? And they redid that, and they blocked off the front plaza from that cut through traffic? This traffic still has travel islands that I suppose they still match up, yeah, I guess they still match up.
They still match up.
Yeah, I guess they still match up.
Yep. Well, but there's some pieces we do have to discuss with the property owner, because one of the provisions we're looking at at site plan is traffic flow and safety and for pedestrians as well, in and off the site, aggressive from the site. So we need to take a look at that. And also, I'm not, like where your unit is potentially located there, there needs to be curb stops where the sidewalk, we're right in front of the parking of the building, so, which is like a little barrier, so that when the cars roll up, they're not going, can go like through the storefront.
When I went to under parking law, I saw that there's many stop sign, and then like this is coming in and out. We have like a good exit safety, I would say that. There's stop sign and everything, there's speed limit also, I believe I saw over there, so yeah.
Yes, and we wanted to, we want, yeah, to take a look at that one. So I'm just thinking of the next steps here, because we still don't, we have, at least we have some information from you about, potentially about the number of spaces. So that would be what we call a major site plan, we have to have a, so we have to re-advertise to have a, for there's a public hearing, so that abutters are notified about the scenario. But also that gives opportunity between now and then, let's get that information from the property owner to see if we can get you...
Yeah, because like it's kind of difficult to get in contact with him and everything. Like, we keep calling him, and then make sure that he sent everything over to Ms. Chantel and everything, and we keep, it's having able to reach them, and so yeah, that's why it's kind of...
If you have any additional contact information, if you could provide that to Chantel?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll try to do some outreach to see what we can...
Okay.
Because we need to have a discussion with them for your benefit.
Okay, tonight, after this meeting, we'll get the information and then over to her by via her email address.
Okay.
Yeah, have his phone number and his email address to Ms. Chantel, via her email address tonight.
So one way, I think, it's like, we can handle this one of two ways, multiple ways. One, and it's like, we certainly can ask the applicant to withdraw for the minor and submit for the major site plan. But we could also look at, say, are we just denying this because of the information, it's not minor, it's major? Or we can sign, have him just sign in an extension, and it allows them the opportunity to apply for the major. We deal with it for the next, at the next meeting, where they can also just withdraw it. At the same time, we're doing the hearing for the other one.
Chantel, is this old?
I don't know, I had found it with another submitter accidentally while I was...
Okay, it must, only because I saw the name on the bottom of it, and that person I know to be associated with Obashawn, so. Because my question was, if he is involved, one of the Marans, then we can definitely work with them. Because I know who they are, but I think that's Obashawn, the prior owner. I don't think that's the current owner, I don't know the current owner.
So looking at those three ways we can address it, do we have, do we have the extension document?
I have blank extension forms if you want to go that route.
Is that maybe the board, like approach to just keep the project live at this moment? So that, give them opportunity to reapply, talk to the property owner.
Can I just ask a practical question, Chantel? I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, presumably there's a fee for a minor site plan?
Right.
Do you know what it is off the top of your head?
It's $25.
How much is the fee for the major site plan?
It's $300.
Okay, so at a minimum, I think the board should just vote that you take $25 off the application fee for the major site plan, for what he's already paid, so he doesn't pay that extra. It's bad enough that it's a different fee. The reason why is, so the difference between a minor and a major site plan, if you didn't understand our chair, is we have to, if it's big enough, we have to allow all the abutters to know that you're here, so that they can have comments if they want. So we have to send out advertisements, we have to pay for them. So that's why there's a fee for the major, a different fee for the major site. So, you know, and again, I don't, I don't want to pile on you, and I'm trying not to, but it's just, we need to make sure things are done correctly. And we need to make sure that as we go through this process, we, you know, we're following the way the city code requires things to be followed. So my suggestion, and I think the chair just agreed with me, is that we'll take the amount you've already spent off your fee, because otherwise you'd have to pay the full 300, and we'll make it 275, which is what you've already paid less, you know, what the fee is. And then you'll just have to go into City Hall, or Philadelphia, however, the major site plan fee in the form. And then we can send out a notice to all the abutters saying, this applicant wants to do this on the property, if you have anything you want to say, come to the meeting, and then they'll have an opportunity to speak at the meeting. So that's, that's the difference. I'm just trying to make sure you're on the same page as us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I don't know if we need a motion, if you want to vote on it, I think that...
I think we can, we can vote to continue contingent upon the applicant signing the...
You want to do an extension?
The extension, so, yeah.
And just add to it that the board is allowing the city to collect $25 less the fee they've already collected for the minor site.
As a continuance, we can still talk about that, I mean, we just, as we just said, we'll...
You just want to continue it?
We'll continue.
Make a motion to continue.
Just make a motion to continue.
Second, just trying to get through.
Yep.
With a second, all those in favor, roll call vote, say aye, all those opposed, say opposed. Elyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and again, we apologize, like that, it's like, your application is being, it's in the middle.
It's because that we are trying to go to the right direction, and then that has to be done and everything, because we don't want to like have confusion with parkings or the safety of the people. That's our priority, is the safety of everybody, so yeah.
The other reason why we're doing this, just so you know, is we, we need to make sure all of, there's so many tenants there. We need to make sure they all fit there, that, you know, all the...
Definitely sort of space for everybody.
Right, and it's for your benefit, it's for, you know, Obashawn's benefit, it's for all the property owners' benefits that are there, saying, we need to make sure everyone that comes in has space, and that you fit there, and, you know, it's for your benefit, we'll do the same thing for the next person, saying, do they fit there?
Yeah, so the thing is, like, when we found the place, we contact the person that's in charge, we ask them like how the parking would work, like, do we have like enough, like section of parking that's ours? And it's like, oh no, because like since it's a plaza, and then the hours you guys will be using, I guess, I'm not sure, you said to me, we would double check, and so we could use any parkings. So that's why it's kind of difficult for, like, when you told me about the site plan of parking, I was like, I was kind of confused, because it was like, he believed, not sure yet exactly, that we could just use any space like that's available and their parking and everything, so yeah.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what we just need, we need to clarify, and if they think that your hours are different than from what their other business hours, that's what they need to provide. Well, what are those business hours to show yours are, you are, it's like maybe there's excessive park, not enough parking, but because hours are different, it works. So we just need to check.
Yeah, double check everything, okay, yeah, thank you so much.
So I'll wait till Chantel's done, because I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what we need to ask them.
Yes, well, I've sent multiple email, well, to Chantel to try to contact, but if we got better contact information...
You want parking counts? So you want how many spaces there are versus how many spaces they need?
Which means we need a breakdown of all the units and all the uses.
And what they're doing.
According to the parking table, how many is required, how many being provided.
So it's how many spaces, how many spaces they have versus how many spaces they're using.
Yes.
And then I think the other conversation about the Franklin Road issue, which I agree, should come up at some point, is something we should approach them and say, so as to avoid future issues, especially with large anchor tenants, like if something happens with Obashawn, at some point that needs to be addressed, so it might be beneficial for them to come back with their own major site plan to look at that open curb cut on Franklin Road, but I don't...
Well, that's when we may have to deal with, with correct part of this.
My point was, I don't think that that issue is going to specifically be tied to this project, but it is a larger issue that we should iron out at some point in the future.
I'd like to see how that, there, the tie in there, because it is a site plan and we're checking on it, so we're reviewing for the activities, and it's like, well, the property owner's going to have to do some things.
If that's the case, then Chantel and Community Development should send that to them, saying, you know, the board or board chair, whomever is expecting, you know, to address the open curb cut on Franklin Road, because it's an excess of 36 feet, which is allowed by code. My point is, I don't want to get to next meeting, and we start a new conversation about something else.
Well, this is, what if you just said, has already been communicated to them, to, so we're still trying to drag it out?
I don't know, I just didn't know if it was already communicated, is the reason why I'm saying.
So we're just trying to get it to the right person now, because maybe it's just went to the management company and not to the whoever it needs to really get to, to get some traction on it.
Okay, sounds good.
But I think we should, we'll try, we'll try again, because we want, we want this to work.
Okay, so the...
We'll get there.
The last thing is the extension. Do you want to have it to the end of August for timing?
I think that's a good idea, to our next meeting.
Yes.
We'll go meeting to meeting, yeah.
Okay, do you need to motion that for me to sign it?
We've continued that already to...
Yeah, we continued to our August meeting.
Well, continuing and extending, it's different, I think.
This is a good point, she just, a valid point about that, so let's make a motion to also grant the...
So as a technicality, I think the only thing matters is what he signed, because he's the one that enters into the agreement with her, so, whatever. I'm fine with it, I'll make a motion to authorize the extension to the end of August.
Yes, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Elyn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? Aye. No, valid point, Chantel.
Okay.
Keep us out of trouble. We have now underneath other business this evening, we have Rev Clinics Operational Plans and Discussion.
How are you?
Hello.
I'm Dave Cottonzano, Executive Vice President of Revolutionary Clinics, this is Dan. He is Director of Labs, and Patrick is the Chief Engineer of the facility. Major reason for us being here, well, first of all, I wanted to mention a letter that was sent to you. I've taken over the leadership of that building and all of, all aspects of operations back in November. And to my understanding, the previous leadership wasn't a very good partner to the town of Pittsburgh, or city of Pittsburgh. I have 10 years in the cannabis industry and managed over 27 states. And one of the mandates of all of the businesses that I have overseen is that we're heavily involved in the community. And I carry that right to this business as well, to the point where Amanda reaches out and we stay heavily involved in the community with planting trees, cleaning up parks, cleaning up our curbs and other parts of the road. So I want to put that out there first and foremost. Some of the things that I've learned along the way is, we had filed a special permit to put a lab in, and that's coming up for...
I believe the end of September is when the special permit modification you gave us in 2022 would be like considered abandoned, I believe is the phrasing you would use?
Yeah, so what we're, so what we're here for is to ask for an extension to that, because we won't get to it by the end of September.
Well, in order to do an extension, you have to formal, you have to formally apply, and we have to do a public hearing for an extension.
We have enough time between now and then, between, sometime between now and the next, let's say, week or two, I would suggest you fill in an application for an extension.
Okay.
Send it to Chantel, we can get on the agenda for August, we can hear it then, and we can do it then. When we were talking the other day, I wasn't aware that you need an extension, otherwise I would have told you. I thought we were just talking about satisfying permit conditions, so, yeah. So we have to have a public hearing for an extension.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I'm happy to go, I'm happy to go through the process.
Luckily, we have, luckily, we have a month in between.
But I was going to say, and, no, I'm sorry, I didn't make the site walk and other aspects, but when the reason why you're on our agenda frequently is because of issues we've been having with odor issues. And it has brought up about the windows maybe being, you know, part of an issue with that. And we were promised to have some rooftop, additional rooftop installations to deal with the odor on a massive scale. We understand that you've taken care of some odor issues on the internal side. We're more concerned about all of the neighbors outside, and particularly, we waived to pretty much a zero setback to residential, where it's 300 feet, because we were not going to know that the business was going to impact any residents, even, you know, right at the border. There shouldn't, people shouldn't be getting used to it.
Chantel, I mean, Paula, if you, wait one second, I'll read you the letter from Steve Curry, because we did just get something, hold on one second.
That's good, but I'll just say, we have gotten complaints from board members, from the public, from, and people complained to the Board of Health, there have been numerous citations issued, to our knowledge, as well. So additional actions were being, thought about, being talked about, just like, how do we get compliance from Revolutionary Clinics? So we're gravely here to see you here this evening, to help see how to address any of these outstanding issues, particularly in the light of looking for an extension. So...
While I'm looking for this, David, why don't you give us a summary on what has changed in the last six months?
Yeah, so I'm the biggest thing that changed, okay, I can give you, I'm very transparent in everything that I do in this business, because I think that's super important for the communities that we're in. When somebody had promised to put rooftop units on top of the building. Again, I've managed over 27 states, built minimum 16 cultivation centers. Those units that they talk about, spray chemicals in the air. Those chemicals that go in the air are worse for the environment than a, in quote, smell. That's not something I would ever stand behind or do. And it's also $500,000 per unit to put on top of the roof. Not something I would do. So what we've done is internal, we're stopping and filtering the odor within the facility. So I've had the mayor out, I had Paul out, I'm willing to have you all come out, walk the facility, take a good whiff around the facility on rainy days, which is, should be when it's at its worst, and on sunny days. There's virtually no smell outside the building. There's more smells when you head down certain roads, and you smell people who are smoking the product. You can smell that, but it's very difficult to smell the building. Now, what I will say, when I came in November, I got out of my car and I said, oh boy. There was one heck of a smell in November. Landing the 28 carbon filter units that all filter within the building and go through our filtration system has taken that away, we're adding four more, and we're going to add four more. We're going to continue adding to a month until we get to my satisfactory inside the building, which then won't allow even anything to escape on super muggy days on the outside of the building. So I don't know what was promised before, I can only say, well, first, I don't make promises, I make commitments.
We were relying upon the applicant and the owner to come up with the plan. That's the plan that they provided, says this will solve the problem, so we talk about promises, it's not because we said you had to do that in particular, that's what was said, this is going to fix the problem, let's have a schedule to do this, and there was delay after delay of trying to get that implemented. So that was quite frustrating.
And I, I hear the frustration, I can appreciate the frustration.
If there's an alternative plan, we just need to get to the endpoint, we're open to that.
So there technically won't ever be an endpoint. We'll keep doing things to mitigate inside issues that could potentially get to the outside. That's where it starts and stops, so I feel like, tell these guys, I'm on an eight-month apology tour to everybody who's ever touched Revolutionary Clinics, because people who told you those things, you wouldn't know, but they weren't telling you the facts. Because we can put something on a roof, you think that's going to stop any odor? It's not going to stop any odor. Again, it's chemicals being sprayed at whatever air is being pushed to the outside, which again, has been proven to be worse for the environment than the odor itself. I don't want the odor outside to begin.
Well, again, that, we're relying upon the industry to tell us, what is the, what is, what is the, you know, what's the bronze, silver... is, what is the, you know, what's the bronze, silver and gold standards in what is necessary in order to treat the situation based upon the structure that it's within.
Sure. The gold standard is to filter the air within the building before it escapes to the outside. Because once it escapes to the outside, then what do you have? Right? That's the gold standard. So these gentlemen worked really hard on that program since I've been involved with this company. And again, nobody's more transparent. I believe nobody will be more transparent to the city and to y'all than myself. What we can do is what we will do. I'm not going to commit to something just to satisfy words. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to do what will actually help the business and help the community both. My understanding is in the last four months, unless I'm going to be corrected, we haven't received an odor complaint.
Yeah, I'll go into all that in one second. What I was going to say before we get into that is, so the one thing that comes to mind is, I'm sure you reviewed the odor mitigation plan that they did last year. So it sounds like you're disagreeing with the odor mitigation plan was. It was a permit condition that they have an odor mitigation plan. So if you don't like it, you have to draft a new one.
Okay.
Because that odor mitigation plan is the only thing on record and we can't take words. We need, we need
I agree.
So just update it however you see fit, submit it. I'm not particularly worried about, I will definitely concur. I talked to the Ward Two Counselor, who I talk to regularly about this project. Council Boishman and I both concurred, and I think Tracy said the same thing last time, that it's definitely gotten better. The smell isn't zero, but it's almost, it's almost zero. There's some days where you can smell it when you drive past, but it is not like it was particularly last fall and last summer where it was every time. Steve Curry had replied to some emails. I emailed the Board of Health and I saw he gave almost the exact same response to you guys. He said, we haven't received a complaint since March 13th, 2024. I'm not sure. They installed the systems they proposed. However, it appears by complaints, things have improved. We'll check again tomorrow. And then they sent a letter to the applicant saying, you're correct, there's only two documented complaints in 2024. I think you can assume that based on the complaints to our office, that whatever actions you have taken have reduced the complaints. I appreciate you working with us and we'll talk about your facility at our weekly meeting. So that's from Commissioner, from Steve Curry.
Yeah, that was him, his communication with me last week.
So that being said, and we talk about the odor mitigation plan, and I like to consider this too, is include a third-party auditing review of the smell, like some type of regular schedule in order to document the effects. Because other than, I really don't want to rely on, well, we haven't received any complaints. We're not the complaint board and just relying on somebody just getting used to it, saying, you know, they're not doing any, I'm not complaining anymore and I'm still suffering with this. Okay. We need to have some independent type of like, this has been effective, this has not been effective, to also let you know, you know, do you have to do anything more? Like, is it working? So there should be some type of like, you know, third party or something.
Yeah, that
To just try to, on those particular, like, highlight the days that particularly where you're going to, you know, have those issues. Also engage the residential community that's abutting it, what their experiences are, times of day, things of that nature as well. So I'd like to see some feedback.
Yeah. Again, what I was going to say is Dan is working on bringing somebody in to do exactly that around the building to, you know, have them put their meters out, waft the air, see what we're smelling and get some feedback. I don't want you to rely on what I'm saying, but I will say that my experience is worth something.
And just my own questions, I'm the only person left in the company that was part of that permit modification. So is what you're suggesting is that we would file for the public hearing for August and that, so would you like that to include?
You're just talking about for the extraction building, for the site plan that we did?
That's the site plan modification that we're talking about, correct?
So to that point, yeah, you, if you want to, if you want to change any of the permit conditions and one of them is time of completion, then you need an extension or modification. So you'll file for a modification, extension. We'll open a public hearing. If you get everything in in time in August, we'll open a public hearing and then we'll discuss whatever changes. Hopefully, it's just change of time and not anything else. As you and I talked at the site walk last week, I don't remember what the permit conditions are. So if there's something in there that you, that you think is an issue, then we can discuss it. I, quite honestly, I didn't even, I don't remember.
You know, I read it and there was mention of odor and taking care of it.
Yeah, that's when we started the odor mitigation issue.
Correct. You and I spoke about, you know, what the in quote
So that's why we're saying that was not compliance with that permit condition. And not compliance with the permit condition technically is $300 a day from that timeline. Okay. It's written at the bottom of the permit.
And you came at the right time because we were very close to getting there. But I do, I do want to reiterate that things have gotten better and I can
And we want to work with, we want to see forward motion and we've been getting no motion. So any motion is good. And particularly though, we are requesting something additional, we want to see that addressed. And that odor mitigation plan will be part of this and it should be. You have already prepared this for, you know, your request for an extension is going to be dependent on, yes, you're asking to do more there, show us that you've mitigated and what you're planning intend, how you're going to keep mitigating.
Yeah, I want to be clear. I got here in November. That's what I can control from November forward. I can't control anything backwards. As, you know, I'm sure you all dealt with it, but I'm, I don't want to say I'm their sheriff in town because it's too much of a tagline there. But I take this seriously. So what we have to do, we will get done to ensure that we get the extension or potentially can look at getting the extension for the lab. If there's any concerns, again, I want to be a good member of the community, our business. I would say feel free to reach out anytime and ask, you know, can we do, can we do, can we do, can you do? Can you come visit the site? Can you walk the facility? Absolutely. We're going to have all the first responders there. Again, we had Paul, we had the mayor. The mayor's invited back. You're all invited to come down, check it out, see what's going on inside the building. Because I think knowing is half the battle and then seeing the folks that work inside the building and their passion for what they do also brings the connection to what we're doing. We're not just a bunch of people over there in the past who are cowboys. You know, it's the marijuana business. This is a real business to me.
And it's like, nice, but the letter, but detail what you've done and what you're going to do, you know, planned and moving forward. So we have, it's like a schedule, this is what's been done since these dates. This is what we're intending to do to monitor it. And this isn't their next steps. If this doesn't work, we are, this is what we're progressing to.
So I was just going to say, just to be clear for that, that public hearing. So what you would prefer, if we're asking to make that change, is to have another odor mitigation assessment done by a third party ahead of that public hearing.
Well, I think it needs to just, I wouldn't say, it would be helpful to have, you know, start the process with that. But I think there needs to be something of even ongoing in your odor mitigation plan of having. So yes, we want to validate what you've done. It would be good on your behalf, right, to say, hey, you know, we have, it's like, just, it's like, you know, the odor complaints and things have gone down since March. This is great, but it's like, can we get some monitoring, like some things about, yeah, on those bad days, has it really done? And based upon what you've done, it's like validating it.
The short answer to your question is, if you can get the, because you disagree with the O and M plan that's in place. If you can get the new one to us before our filing deadline for next month's meeting, great. Then we can just, you know, hopefully, we can, we can have that. We can have answers. We can vote. If not, because it might take time to do it, my suggestion would be you still get the package in for the extension. We open the public hearing. We keep the extension active until such a time as you provide all the necessary documentation. And then, you know, we can do however. The other question we're going to ask you is how long do you need from, you know, how long till you start? How long till you finish? Now, this is obviously going to be dependent on us having that, the odor issue aside. So again, if, if you say the existing odor mitigation plan is junk, we need, we need a new one. And then, you know, we can, we can talk about, it's going to, you know, let's say for the sake of argument, give, give you, you know, six months or 10 months to start, 18 months to finish or whatever. Those are the questions we'll, we'll need answers from you for. And then we'll have to debate if that's satisfactory. So
And that deadline's in like the next couple of weeks.
So it has to be prior to two weeks before our next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Next Tuesday would be the deadline?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Because this meeting's a week late.
Yeah, right. That would be a little tough to get the
Yeah. So again, if you can't get the application in for the extension, my suggestion is because your, if it expires before our September meeting, it's easier for us just to, to open the hearing, extend that a month, the deadline for the permit. That way it doesn't expire and we don't have to deal with an expired permit. And then in September, if we have to go to September with all the documentation, then we at least have the permit still active. That sound logical?
I'm pretty confident we could have it done for September.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For your September filings. I'm worried more about Chantel getting the, the public notices out and then Paula being okay with what I just said.
Well, I want to, I really want to know, do we have a copy of the permit? What's the deadline date on that? Is it September? What is the?
I believe it was like, it was like September 21st or something like that.
9/21/24 for completion.
Or the 22nd.
Set to expire.
Okay. Which is in our meeting date in September is?
Like the 17th or something.
No, we actually pushed it back, didn't we?
We pushed it to a different day because we thought there was an election, but I guess there isn't.
But we never moved it back. We said, just keep it.
No, because Alex and I can't be present at that meeting.
So I think the 17th.
Right, the 24th.
Okay.
I think so.
I think we can comfortably commit to the filing for the extension for August and then having the odor mitigation assessment done for September. I think that's the timeline.
And we can just continue it if that's the case. Then we don't have to like
Right. We, I mean, and it's, it would just be simple if we just took a vote just to extend the permit a month in the interim.
Not really. It's not that simple because then you have to actually file a decision on that.
Okay. Oh, that's true. But if the hearings open, it doesn't matter.
Exactly.
If the hearings open, it doesn't matter.
Correct. Just the hearings open, we can continue it till
The other thing between now and then that I want you guys to check on that, I'm looking in the registry right now. I don't see that permit recorded. There might have been a mishap on your prior administration's part, but the decision that he was just referencing?
The site plan approval?
No.
Well, there's also a decision too, right?
There's a special permit.
It's not a special permit? It's just site plan?
No, it's special.
No, we did, I think it was a major site plan.
It should be a special permit because ME was, was always, you know, now, is it now site plan? I don't remember.
It was addition of an extraction lab. So it was
I believe. Do you have that decision with you? Does it say special permit at the top?
I'm not sure that we have it, honest.
If you do have it and it says special permit at the top of it, it has to be recorded in order to be valid.
And that's yours.
Which, which should have already happened by now, but I just looked in the registry and I didn't see it. So I mean, I could go back to December, but, I mean, to September 22, but I probably
Oh, yeah, we do have it.
What does it say at the very top?
Modification of special permit.
Yeah. That is required to be recorded in the Registry of Deeds.
So it's not effective. You can't ask for an extension until you
Until it's recorded. So you have to record that first. Is that, do you have a signed copy?
Great.
Yeah.
Do you have a signed copy? Is that stamped by, the last page of that, is it stamped by the clerk and signed by our chair?
I may not have, I may not have.
That's fine. That's fine.
I took the most important pages, but I might.
If, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to prepare you. Make sure you have a signed copy.
It should be stamped right on the front by the city clerk actually, too.
City clerk never signed it.
Yeah.
Can I, can I see what you have and I can tell you what you need?
The city clerk never signed it.
So you probably don't have the executed copy, which hopefully we have somewhere, which I don't know.
I forgot the file tonight. Sorry.
This is signed by you and not stamped by the clerk.
Well, that's the one I drop off. So, yes, so
Oh, this is a photocopy of a paper clerk. Oh, it was, but it's not, but it's not tested by
Because the 20 days and
Go to the clerk's office because she, so the clerk stamped it, which means they got it. This, this, she signs this after the 20-day appeal period goes by. So the clerk should have a copy that's signed. That
Oh, okay.
Go to the clerk, get a copy of the signed copy that she says the appeal has gone by. Take that to the Registry of Deeds and get it recorded and then file for your
Extension.
Extension. So that has to be recorded first because we can't
Extend something that doesn't exist.
Exactly.
That's fair.
Good that we came here.
Yeah.
One of the permit conditions at the end says, in order for this to be valid, it has to be recorded in the Registry of
It says it right on the last paragraph.
Understood.
So I'm glad we caught that.
Yeah.
So, so do that first, then file for the extension. Then when we open the hearing in August, we can talk about how far along you are with the odor mitigation plan and if you'll have it by September and hopefully you'll shortly thereafter. If not.
So I would say I'm encouraged. So very glad that you're here and reaching out and
I do want to say for the record, we had a good relationship with the first group. Very good.
Yes.
For the first five or six years you were open, no problems at all. And then there was like a three-year period where just everything went to hell.
Believe it or not, it was the same group.
Okay.
It was the same group. They just stuck their head in the sand and said, run.
The CEO stepped down. There was a new interim CEO and it was
Yeah. Bert, we dealt with Bert a lot and Bert was great to deal with and we had no problems. And the odor didn't become an issue until you guys were probably, I would say, five years in. And I think that's part of the frustration was we, someone had thought it were window issues and then other people thought it was emissions issue. So anyway, I'm glad you guys are on top of it. I agree with Paula. Baby steps, positive signs, you know. Like I said, if you disagree with what's already in the odor mitigation plan and your plan is different, just revise it to say what it's going to be, what your plans are. You know, it has all the stuff in there. Like if there's complaints, what are the steps that you're going to take? And, you know, all those sorts of things. It sounds like you have the answers to those questions. Put them on paper.
Again, I want to be clear. We don't have all the answers, but we have processes, procedures, things that will, that will mitigate odor.
That's what we're looking for.
So we'll, we'll make sure we
We want steps in place. So if then, you know, if then, this.
Yeah, and our plan is to keep
Choose your own adventure.
Yeah. To keep working with Steve at the health board because we frankly, they don't really give us any of that information if we don't ask for it. So I'm just continuing to work with him month by month to, to track if there's been more complaints and make sure that that's taken care of.
Great. That's part of it. Coordinating with the Board of Health and that's where the nuisance complaints would be logged and like on a periodic basis to keep, to check in. That should be part of the plan.
Absolutely. So yeah, we'll do the city clerk, submit the extension by next Tuesday, I think is what it said.
Get that to the, get that recorded.
Yes. Yeah. I'm going to go do that tomorrow.
Include a third-party evaluation of your, of your processes and the
In the O and M plan.
In your odor mitigation plan. And like anything you can even do before, during, it's like, you know, between August and September of like, yes, and we've done some, you know, hired and done some tests preliminarily and things are looking good. And we're going to continue to do this for the next either X months or every, you know, every quarter or something like that to keep checking on.
I think I mentioned this to you when I met you there too. Part of the, aside from the frustration with the Ward Counselor, Ward Two Counselor in particular, who I don't know if you've reached out to him yet, but you should
We have. We've reached out to, I think, Chantel to get meetings with everyone.
Yeah. So the Ward Two Counselors, he's, he's the eyes and ears of Ward Two. He, you know, he had a lot of complaints and a lot of issues there. So him and I talked regularly about this. And, you know, reach out to everyone that you can. But, you know, I think that, you know, the only other suggestion I have, as I said before, is, you know, go over that site plan. Make sure, the other thing, make sure you look at the site plan itself and that what's on the property now is either done according to that plan or is going to be done according to that plan. Because when we, when we approved, when we created that site plan, it's not just the extraction lab. It was, there was fencing there. There were like
You were going to do is more landscaping in the courtyard.
I heard there were supposed to be trees planted. I just planted a few trees. We'll look into planting a few more trees.
Look at the plan first.
I will. Make sure it follows the plan. Definitely.
Because that's, you know, that's the most important thing. Because if you change things and you need that plan to be different so that you're not in violation of the plan we approved, just get the plan modified to show what you're going to do. And then tell us what the difference is between what we approved and what you want to change.
Reach out again to the apartments there, who, people who are sharing, so at that courtyard to verify, this is what we had proposed and do you want to see anything else? Or because they're the butter, there's going to be, and you want to know up ahead and address any concerns ahead of time. So engage with them.
At least historically, the Amwell Apartments have been very quiet in this whole thing. Much more quiet than I anticipated. I don't think, we've seen maybe a couple property owners in the 12 years or however long we've been doing this.
We met with their building manager two years ago when we were doing this and she said that they had received complaints in the prior years, but she hadn't really heard any since. I haven't talked to her in about two years.
The adjacent apartments. We're pretty good partners with them. We help them with their garden. We give them soil. We give the city soil. We, you know, we're
So that is, again, engage with them about what the plan is or what you've done and if they want to see anything else[1758.61] So that is again, engage with them about what the plan is or what you've done and if they want to see anything else.
Sure.
Additional or what you've previously proposed is satisfactory. And I would go a little bit, even though the manager maybe not have heard anything, maybe actively engage that a little bit further. It's like, yes, can you please ask the question then? Or do something to, of your residents to see if they are experiencing anything. Don't just wait till someone says something to you.
Because they will be getting, they will be getting notices of a public hearing. So it's nice if you talk to them first.
Yeah, love it. Love it. Just as well as I'm boisterous here, I'm more boisterous over there. So there's questions being asked all the time.
I mean, there was improvements.
To the neighboring businesses. We have functions. We invite everybody in the neighborhood. So.
I mean, there was improvements to the parking lot, the fencing in the back that I think was redone over because that was a, just terrible.
The fencing was going to be changed for the project, but since the project hadn't been engaged in yet, we didn't, we haven't actually done anything with the fence yet. But yeah, we, we'll reach back out to the building manager and we'll, we'll have a conversation with them as well. And like I said, we did reach out to the Ward counselor. We just haven't heard back from him yet. His secretary said he's not good at email or something like that.
Oh, you, you probably talked to the clerk then if you say his secretary. Talked to the city clerk.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure. I wasn't.
So do me a favor. Do you have a card on you?
You know what? I said I'm going to bring some cards and I did and my backpack is in the truck.
Do me a favor. Just write your name on the back of one of those pieces of paper that you don't need. If there's, yeah, the agenda's fine. Write your number down on there. I'll talk to Paul tomorrow. I'll, I'll give him your number.
Okay.
Because I know, I talked to him after I left you last Monday.
Yes.
And I told, because I told him that I was there and he said, oh, he said, I wish I was there. And I said, you know what? I said, I promise I will have them reach out to you. So he, I know he wants to go.
We're trying to have him up for you.
I guarantee you, I guarantee you he will go.
And as you're here, there was been previous discussion about windows. So, and it was about how we could, you looking at replacement windows or something like window-like in the courtyard or what you're looking at.
Repairing the panes of the windows.
Fantastic. Keeping what's there. Well, keeping what's there, like keeping the historic look, like just repairing them versus.
Yeah, I mean, part of.
Oh, wow.
Do you just need extras? You can put them on your table. They were just for the public. That's, I didn't want to take them all.
You know, part of the, part of the conversation was it's a historical building. We have to do this and we have to do this and we have to do this. And I asked the question, is it really a historical building? If it is, then why should we have to do this and this and this? Cause historical buildings want to look exactly the way they're supposed to look, i.e. if it's hammered glass, it's supposed to be hammered glass. If it's not, then it's the regular pane glass, double pane glass. So we're going to make it look back. The way it looks is the way it's going to look, but with glass that's not broken. So we'll have all those panes replaced.
And I was going to say, keep an eye on, we've been on the, the ground level. Going up the street after the bridge where it was, I'll say the windows were kind of like boarded up so to speak, like faux windows. If they're, the condition of those are.
Lower level.
Yeah, they made the look.
Again, before I got here, it's plywood with.
Exactly.
Strapping that makes it look like windows, but it's not.
Right.
So we'll keep an eye on it. Make sure they stay good. Make sure they stay painted.
We want to make sure the condition's kept up on that.
Yes, of course.
Minimally. Because it's like, because it's starting to degrade. That was, that's where it's at eye level. So particularly, we just wanted to look good from that perspective.
Of course. I mean, again, what we'll do.
Remember has any questions or any thoughts on that? I don't know. Peter or anything on.
Peter, you might have, do you have any input? Liz and I, I just tried to look it up and I kind of, I don't think it's a historic building though. I mean, not that it doesn't have historic character, but I don't think it's a historic building.
It's not registered with.
I don't, I don't think it is. I mean, you guys do your due diligence if you want, but I, I don't.
Haven't found anything.
I don't believe it is.
The past leadership of the company would, had said that we were being held to certain things by the historic committee. I don't, I don't really know what that.
Like Liz had said, I know Liz said this to you. It would only be if you ever accepted financing that, that tied it to the, like national historic tax credits, those sorts of things. Which I don't think they do because you can't get federal financing, federal funding. So my guess is that. Yeah, my guess is, right, exactly. So, so it's, I, I'm, I'm interested in that conversation just from my own belief, but I don't think it is.
Yeah, I know the two owners of the building, the Ansons, and they, I spoke to Ryan and he said it's not.
Yeah. So we're, it's more, we're trying, and that's why you see the bottom windows. It's like we're trying to just keep the character.
For sure.
That's true. I don't think we ever could have done all the windows we did along One Oak, along the Oak Road side if it were.
If it were.
Yeah, that was just the best they could do.
And I had mentioned, it's Dan.
Me?
Yeah. Okay. I saw Dan's name.
This is Dan.
The only reason I said this, I knew you were Dave and then I saw Dan on all the things. I was like, oh shit, did I call him the wrong name? So anyway, Dave. When, like, the only thing I had mentioned to Dave when we met was the windows that were painted that we did, just keep them painted and keep them looking nice.
I think that's what Paula was just saying.
Yeah, because that was a stopgap that we, that is now a permanent thing.
So unless you find more elastic improvement there, they could, over that, at least keep up what's there. And in the future, as we've been told about like the window, be the replacement and some of those aspects is because the interior was built so close up to the windows, it wasn't, it wasn't allowing you to do any maintenance on the windows or actually repair or replace the windows. So in any future build out that you attend to do, keep that in mind of keeping some space available.
Might want a three-foot space between the windows.
I mean, to be quite frank, as it stands now, the only future plans we have is this, is planting the lab. The building's quite large inside.
Yes.
Plus we have the extension of the other building if we ever do. So we won't be building out. We'll be building inside and.
I also don't believe.
That's what she's talking about.
Yes.
When you do the inside of the envelope, you might want to keep room between the windows so you can maintain them properly inside and outside.
One of the gentlemen who has been there since, what, it was the school, John?
Oh, when the charter school was there?
Whoever built and did this work, just not smart. So we'll leave it at that and, and go forward. But again, what I don't want to leave without saying this, we'll have Amanda send another email out.
Chantel.
All of you.
Oh, your Amanda?
No, yes, mine.
Okay.
Send an email out and invite you all down for a tour. And if you want to take advantage of it, please do. I'm known as a good tour guide, but we'll have Dan on it as well on the team. You come see the inside of the facility and see what things have changed. At least from the inside. So you can speak, you know, when somebody's asking questions, you know, what the inside looks like and what we're doing.
As I think I mentioned, as I think I mentioned to you when I saw there, all I cared about was the outside anyway. The inside, you look like every other cultivation facility. Don't care what the inside looked, but I appreciate what you're saying.
The inside's important because the inside makes the outside look better. If it's clean and neat on the inside, it's going to be clean and neat on the outside, vice versa.
You get, they, I, I, so I took.
I'll just say one thing to also be aware of, and we'll get to the hearing aspect, is we're probably also going to go over what your parking situation is because of all the different shifts and aspects.
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're a hundred percent within what we need. We've eliminated the second shift. Do we ever have a third shift?
No, I mean, we, we have some second shift activity, but we also are, the building size of the staff is reduced, is like a hundred people less than it was at that time. And I don't think we're planning on increasing that head count. So.
So bring some numbers with that about to be prepared, you know, to document some of that.
Yep.
About your capacity, what your, what your employees are in the parking and so, and how your shift so that you can still show, because we always have to touch bases on how the parking is. You are one of the largest, you know, facilities. So.
But for the record, I told Paula this, I was surprised when you told me your canopy's only 22,000 square feet, right? That's what you told me?
Okay, there's a, it's 37,000 square feet, but when you look at just true bench space, that's the number.
Well, the reason why I say that is the, at least the CCC number was 100,000 square foot capacity.
It is.
Yeah. So, so the, the actual canopy that you grow is significantly less than what theoretically could be grown there if, if you expanded to, I think you were saying. So when you look at the One Oak Road building, it's, it's U-shaped and well, it's on the far U. They use the, the, the one close to Oak Road. Then you have the connector building, which is unimproved, correct?
Correct.
So theoretically, there's expansion space there.
And what would you think as a, as a trigger for, if we've, depending on how, when you expand it, like 50,000 square feet or something for a number of employees?
Right now with the state of cannabis, no. See, improvements gets us to where we need to be. We don't need to expand yet. If we had 10 cultivation centers closed down, then that would be a conversation. But right now.
The, the market looked a lot different when we got that license.
Yes.
So it's about quality of product now, not.
It's about quality of product, yes, and producing and getting it.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at though, is that for the parking, for the 100,000 square feet, it's like, that's what you're permitted to do. That's how much space you should have to be able to suit for employees and parking, right? So that being said, we're only doing 20, you know, what you're doing right now, this is my space. So it's like, when does it make sense to say, oh, maybe if someday, if we hit 50,000, that's when we would add on X amount of employees, we can then revisit the parking at that.
Yeah, that trigger would be if the cannabis industry flips on its head and we need to produce twice what we're producing.
I'm looking as far as the, as the production, not the, how the industry's going, but like when, when you, when, it's like, when you decide to expand to X square feet is when we evaluate parking again.
Yeah, it's all tied together. So I always liken everything back to the garden because the supply and demand. If it demands more, then we need to, more and it rolls downhill.
Yes, but I can't do a permit that way.
No, I know you can't. You don't, we'll worry about that when we get there.
Right. So I'm trying to put a measure in that says we will evaluate the parking again when and if you hit X trigger. That's what I'm saying. Otherwise, we're saying, let's say you need 500 parking spaces. Like I don't, I only need 150 because of this. And it's like, okay, we'll say you don't need 500 until you hit this number. That's what I'm trying to, trying to get at. So we're saying you don't need, do you need the capacity right now for 100,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Or are you, because you're only using a lesser square footage, you only need this amount because this amount of employees that you're having.
Yeah. So that trigger, I'll have to think about the trigger and get back, and get back to you on.
Yes. So just think about that for that, for the, I just want you to start to think about that because it's like, then we, puts into our mind that you only need X amount until you expand and then you notify it when you expand. This is when.
I think the easier way to look, I think the easy way.
I want to review it like every.
I think the easy way to look at that right now is, when you come back next month, you say, we have 100 employees, we have 160 parking spaces or whatever there is for spaces. At full build out, we might do two shifts of 80 employees each. So we, you know, we might need 160 spaces for shift change and everything else. So you basically say, how many spaces you have now, how many spaces you might need at the largest you'll get, and you just prove that you have enough or you have a plan to bust people in or whatever the case would be. I think I had mentioned, I think I had mentioned to you when I was there that all the lots, not all, but there's a bunch of lots that have bought your parking lot that just sold, that I would have, you know, thought would have been great for you guys to own so that if you ever did need to do new parking, but that's ship and sail.
We have a ton of parking and it would be, once the trigger, I'd be surprised if we, if we bump out of the parking lot we, we have and the parking spaces we have. We go all the way up to Antwell.
When you were working, when you were working three shifts, I remember a conversation that, that there was one shift in particular at shift change, there was a parking issue.
Really?
Yes.
That, that was a problem about two and a half, three years ago. That's correct.
It might even, yeah. From my memory, it might've, it feels like forever ago. Who knows? But, but at one point there was a parking issue and that's, that, that was part of the reason why we had a conversation at one point about, well, you need to figure out, you know, if that's a parking issue, how to get more parking. The problem is you're in a very dense neighborhood that really doesn't have a lot of other options. So you'd have to find a public lot, have people park there, bust them to your facility.
Sure. One of the things, well, we, here, we won't get there. Automation will come in and help us now that the industry's grown with automation. So instead of adding 100 people, we'll add automation.
Would you still like to evaluate it?
Sure. Yeah, we'll, we'll do the right thing to give you.
Right. We just want like, it's like what you're saying, what your needs are when we do this. This is the amount of employees. This is how much, so ergo, this is how much parking we need. This is how much parking we have. You demonstrate you can support it. That's all we're looking for is that you can demonstrate the support between what you're doing now and your growth.
Understood.
Great.
Perfect, yeah.
Awesome. Do you guys know what you need?
We get to vote on nothing. I was excited.
Correct.
Well, the only other side I would have just very quickly is you might want to just touch base in the next week or two with fire in particular. Whatever input they had, I think it was in our permit, just make sure that they're okay with the, you know, modification and everything. Cause I know they had concerns. I think you and I talked about this back.
Yeah, they had a exclusion of ethanol extraction after.
Yeah, they, they, they had a.
So anyway, you don't, we don't need to go into it now. My point was you might just want to touch base with them because we're going to rely on their comment for our decision. So make sure that they're at least aware that it's coming back.
Can you reaffirm what it is that you're doing? So it's like, this was our package. Look at what you submitted previously. Has anything changed from that? You're not just looking, is like an extension, is just the extension? It's like all the information's still the same?
All the information is the same. We're not doing anything different.
So you might want to still just provide some of that to refresh, saying like, yes, I depart, this is what we were doing and you're okay with that.
I believe the lieutenant, I forget his name, the fire, one of the fires, he had stepped down. There was a change in leadership or something like that. So we, I think met with them a year or two ago. Just to reiterate that, but we'll, we'll meet with them again.
Yep. So it's like do all the homework ahead of time and it'll make the process much smoother.
Okey dokey.
Again, outreach, touch bases. Glad you're here.
Okay. Well, it's time for dinner.
All right.
It's past time for dinner. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else they want to add? Two. Okay. We have next under other business, we've got two in front of us for bond reviews for solar. Provided information. It's regarding decommissioning of the solar when it comes down, end of life, I think like 25 years or so. So there's one of them, it's 140, 140 on Howe Road for the high school installation. So they provided something to us, except that in the decision in the ordinance, it says to be prepared by, I think like a third party or independent party. And it looks like that one was prepared by affiliate, affiliate of the applicant. So not really an independent party, but it's a person that works or works for select when they were an applicant engineering. So we're just not sure, independent, because we're not sure of like really what the bond amount should be. So it's trying to ask the process about how do we, how do you validate that? Do you have any thoughts, Chantel?
Well, I, I guess I thought initially that we, we do have some on-call engineers that work for the city. So if we could ask for a review of the estimate from one of the firms that works for the city. And.
I worry particularly that this might be a specialized aspect of, although Bowler did it and we run into Bowler relatively frequently. So my suggestion to Paula, and I, I suppose it would be dependent on how the board feels about this. So Matt River Solar was done by, by a professional engineering company, Bowler Engineering. Because they are inherently independent, because they are an engineering company that has theoretically the expertise to do those sorts of things. I am comfortable with that, that document being from them. In our conversations last night, Paula found out in a Google search that the, I'll bring it up now, the decommissioning for the high school project, apparently, the, hold on, let me share my screen. The individual who, who drafted it, this Mr. Gregory, Stephen Gregory is president of Gregory Property and Development Group. He is, or was employed by the solar company that's doing the solar array. So we thought that our ordinance specifically says it has to be an independent third party, independent consultant to do them. I think that the independence is kind of put into question when they had on their resume that, that they were at least previously an employee of the solar company. I would, I would recommend that Chantel's suggestion of maybe sending that one out for a review, just for someone to say, yes, those figures look, you know, look somewhat adequate. And you have someone professional doing that, it kind of takes that independence question out of the.
Wow.
Review.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other thoughts on it?
I definitely think that you should look into it.
Okay.
Good job, super sleuth.
That was all Paula.
Well, we were just looking at, it's like we had no, like, is an engine, like a PE, someone signing off on one, and then the other, we were looking for where the credential like was and trying to look, look. When it just popped up on LinkedIn and stuff. So it was like, oh, the company's out of Illinois. So it's like a real estate brokerage company.
And, and I want to be.
So just say about that. And I don't want to disparage or anything, just saying that it's not technical. We just want to make sure there's been a, a technical review that the bond, so that we all, everybody's comfortable with, this is what the amount should be. Then also the other aspect is like, what should, what is the bond language? And there should be some legal review with that. Like, okay, we'll get a bond, but how is it supposed to be worded? In the interest for this, for the benefit of the city at the end, at the end game, 25, 30 years from now scenario, so that whatever language would go to are legal for review, but, and they would also pay that, whatever that legal review fee is, since, you know, we contract that out. And we get, you know, looked at too, to kind of finalize this. Since we're not experts in that.
No.
Realm. So it's, we want to make sure that the bond amount's correct and looked at by appropriate consultants in order to do that. And everybody's comfortable with that number and also that the legal, legal, city legal is comfortable with how the city's interest is, how it's worded.
Well, once someone issues a bond, yeah, it'll be, it'll be issued from a, a financial corporation. So it's just, yeah, is the bond wording right? corporation. So it's just, yeah, is the bond wording right? I, I agree with that too, yeah. I, I, and, and I just want to piggyback on what you said, Paula, because I was the one that said it. I, so not saying anything about his work, because I, these numbers for both, neither project mean anything to me. I don't know how much it is to take down a solar project. It's just, you know, I saw this one and I said, okay, well, we don't know who this is. I think I, I had talked in the future, from the get-go, we'll hopefully for the next solar project that we do, we'll just hire our own person from the get-go so that they don't have to hire someone. And then we hire someone to review the one that they hired, so.
Okay. But I like, at least at this point to just have our retained engineering services at least look at the amounts to say, yeah, these are fine.
Okay.
Shouldn't be much.
Yep. That's what I was thinking.
In that regard. And then if they, if that's fine, then it goes to the next step for the legal, letting, letting the company know, but then also like getting legal involved, like speak with our legal department to find out like how they want to proceed with that in the process.
Okay.
It's like, did they get the bond? Did they provide some preliminary language to them for, say, okay, then execute it? We don't want to see it after the fact and they have to change it.
Right. I got you.
That's worthwhile. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Alin, do you have
No, no, I can't believe you found that. So.
I mean, the numbers are surprisingly similar, even though they're two very different projects, but.
All right. And then the last item we have underneath other business is Tibbet Circle, partial covenant release at 277 Tibbet Circle of Lot 24B. And I'll just say, there's been potentially some history with this development in that this site may have been previously released. We're gonna look back in the records to see if we can find that document in this regard. That being said, if we can't find that, we want to vote this evening in order to release this Lot 24B. And we'll authorize Chantel to sign on behalf of the board for the release.
Yeah, so, so we talked about this briefly right before, I talked to Chantel briefly right before about this. My suggestion is, because there's a couple of different documents going around, like the one that's up on the screen now, which was the example, which we can't do because it needs to be notarized and we can't all sign it and get it notarized. My suggestion was, and Chantel was saying, there might be one floating around that was already signed, that we, we vote tonight to have a new document drafted that has the language similar to the language of the other covenants we've done at Tibbet Circle stating that the planning board voted by majority vote at tonight's meeting to authorize Principal Planner Chantel Fleck to sign the, the release for this particular lot. That way we're covered, even it doesn't have to wait till next month's meeting.
Make that in form of a motion?
I will.
In form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
All right. We have, I know it's potentially, nothing formally listed on the communications. And then I know we have one set of minutes. So maybe we do the minutes and then if there's any, any else for updates, we can go through that.
Yes.
So minutes we have are from May, this past May.
Like fresh on our mind, May.
Fresh on our mind, May.
Great job.
So I think for last, for last year, we just have December. So maybe next time we'll get December and June and it'll be like, so close. And then we'll be right on track.
They're up.
All right. I already looked at this set of minutes and I had to add whatever, it's in this draft, I had already made my edits too.
I did as well. Does, does anyone have anything that they want to look at or want, without going through, and there's 11 pages. This was a lengthy meeting. If anyone has anything specific they want to look at or want to comment on, otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it when you make it.
I'll make it then. Didn't hear anything.
All right. Motion to approve the May 28, 2024 minutes.
Second.
With a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say opposed. Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula? We're so close. And then, let's see, under any other communications, I just want to mention, there, there is, there is activity happening at Japonos Drive.
Oh.
Okay. There is some pavement. There's some markings and stuff going on, so.
It's not just part of the gas thing that they do.
Right. It's actually looking like some roadwork being done.
Yeah, so I can give, I can give the board the background. So I had, Jeff Hillman called me a week ago, Monday, I think it was, and said that he went up there and they marked the pavement with, so we had done two sidewalks to show what the DBW wanted and what planning, Paul and, Paul and I did separate, I think we were at different times. We did separate sidewalks just to make sure that everything was going to be done. The War Four Council was there. And we had an agreement. They went out two weeks ago, that was beginning of the year. They went out two weeks ago, or last week, to do kind of the final, this is what's gonna happen. And apparently there was a disagreement about what was gonna happen versus what they thought was gonna happen. Long story short, I just talked to Nick on Friday and he said he talked to Jeff and Jeff said he thinks everything's squared away and that they're ready to go. So the hope is, finally, 12, 15 years later, I think, 12 years later, hopefully Japonos will be paved within the next month. So we will see.
Wow. That would be nice.
Yep.
Anybody, Paul, you wanted to make a public service announcement?
Yeah, so I got, right before we came here today, I got an email about, or anyone that hap, that might be watching this. Bear with me for one second. I got a, so they're doing a permanent stage design community input meeting for Riverfront Park, Wednesday, August 7th at 5:30. It's at Riverfront Park. The rain location is the North Room, so third